Don't piss it off, because I can fix it later.
It's almost like if Guardian-
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. Like to call to order the regular meeting of the Superior Town Council for Monday, June 23, 2025. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Shannon.
Mayor Mark Laces.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jason Surbu.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Cowish.
Here.
Councilmember Stephanie Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Neil Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Foster. Councilmember Heather Craycroft.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Martin Toth.
Here.
Town Attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Here.
All right, up next is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes that anybody would like to make to the agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember Craycroft.
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tem Surbu. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Surbu.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish.
Yes.
Councilmember Craycroft.
Yes.
Mayor Laces.
Yes. All right, up next is item 2D, Council Reports. Who would like to go first?
Thank you. I'll go first very quick. No updates from my end, other than a reminder that June 24th, or Wednesday, is Bike to Work Day. That's it.
Thanks, Neil. Who's next? Heather?
I'll go. Thank you, Mayor. Busy from my seat just by coincidence and had an opportunity to be part of a lot of great things in the community. Starting with Wednesday, I think a lot of us were at the Superior Market that was held in downtown Superior. Since the first one got rained out, lucky to be at this first one, it really was amazing to see and be a part of. And even, even more curious to see who was there as a resident and then those that were there as guests of our community. It was a fantastic event, so kudos to everyone and loved having all the vendors there and look forward to seeing them next month. Had a historical commission meeting this past Friday. They are bringing the historical fire truck to the Fourth of July Parade, as we all have gotten used to seeing through the years. But this year, they've really expanded it, and I'm sure or excuse me, Councilmember Cowish will probably talk a little bit, but very excited to have the Superior Veterans Group to ride and walk with the truck. And to me, it just shows more about how our community works together, and it's really neat to see our council along with the commissions and committees kind of cross-sexual, you know, cross-working together on different things. So that should be fun to see. I think all of us would probably be very excited to announce that Menchee's Frozen Yogurt is open for business downtown. It's wonderful to see a resident who has been part, you know, new to this community and then opens their business here. So highly recommend going by downtown to get your froyo on. Also attended chat with the chief on Saturday. Wanted to remind everyone that happens once a month, and it's great to hear our safety updates. And then just really ask questions and create that dialogue. Wanted to thank the Superior Chamber for hosting this monthly gathering at the community center and glad I could be there. Lastly, I think Councilmember Surbu will talk about this, but the Monte Carlo Night was outstanding. So I just wanted to share my appreciation to Michaela and Tim and all the guest relations staff that were there, because it really was a fantastic event. So thank you, Jason, for mentioning the idea.
Thanks, Heather. Jen, you ready?
Okay, sure. It feels like there was a lot and then also nothing. I think that's just the times that we're in right now. So thanks, Heather, for mentioning the veterans group. So we normally meet on the last Sunday of the month, but I requested that the meeting be canceled this, this Sunday, but we'll be meeting on the Fourth of July. I was invited as a guest to Representative Crowe to attend the Congressional Gold Medal Award Ceremony acknowledgment in DC, so that's going to be at the end of this week. And they're going to be honoring the Army Ranger Veterans of World War II. So that was a very surprising and just wonderful invitation to receive. So I'll be there, excuse me, I'll be there in my council member role, but also as a superior veteran. And Friday, I know that a lot of the, the state representatives leave DC Friday, sometimes Thursday night, but I'm trying to get in with whoever I can on Friday morning to just be like, hi, we're here. This is, you know, what we're about and thanks for advocating for our area, especially the regional issues and the public lands issues that are coming up in Senate Bill. So there's too many things to list, but I will do my best to connect with legislators and make sure they know what we want here from the town of Superior. This weekend, I attended Juneteenth ceremony in Longmont, and I learned, I didn't know they called themselves this, but they call themselves Long Monsters. That was adorable, and I had no idea. But it was a really wonderful event hosted by one of the council members there. And Congressman Nagus stopped in to say some words, and it was just a wonderful acknowledgement of black culture, black history. And I love that we have the opportunity to go to events like that in our community. There's so many. What else? I think, I think that's it. Oh, the, I wanted to say definitely a thank you to staff for the ribbon cutting and grand opening of our new civic space in downtown Superior and the market. It was, I was just talking with Leslie, it was like a wonderful weather day. It was all the reasons why people live here happening all at once in one place. And I just can't thank the staff enough for being available to answer every and all questions from the community. And there was a lot of engagement about Community Park and what people wanted to see there. And I just really appreciate Taylor and the staff just being out there to answer questions for people and then doing follow-up as well after that. So there was a lot of random questions that came that really didn't have anything to do with the civic space. But, you know, the residents were there, and I just really appreciate our staff always being available to answer for them. So, thanks.
Thanks, Jen. Councilmember Miller?
Not a whole lot. I just wanted to echo the thanks for staff. That summer market was absolutely fantastic. And like Jen said, all the reasons why we love Superior and love living in the area. So for anybody who didn't make it, please make sure you make it next month. It's just a whole lot of fun, great opportunity to support our local businesses. And there were a lot of great vendors, so wonderful food, everybody should attend. And then the only other thing I have for council, and just shoot me an email if you're interested in this, I just saw it on my email this afternoon, but it sounds like there's a Congresswoman from Nepal that's going to be in town very last minute tomorrow night, and there's going to be a dinner for her. And so if anybody is interested, obviously I'm out of town, so I won't be able to attend, but they want to get at least a few people from town to attend that. So if anybody's interested, please let me know. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Stephanie. Jen, you're back for seconds.
Yeah, sorry. I forgot. I was so excited about the farmer's market. So if there are any veterans, families of veterans or veteran community identifying people, you're welcome to come join us in the Fourth of July Parade. As Heather mentioned, the historical fire truck will be there with Superior Veterans signs on it. And this is a new group that's forming, and so we've got some members, but we would love this to be an opportunity for people to see that there are many veterans in the community. You don't have to be coming to the meetings to come and walk with us in the parade. And there will be some spaces on the truck for those who might have mobility issues. So please, if you're a veteran, come and join us. There's no required uniform. That's the question always the veterans want to know the answer to. There is no uniform of the day. You can just come and wear whatever you're comfortable in. But I think especially in these times where there are cuts to benefits and there are a lot of support systems that are being decreased for veterans, that it's important for our community to see us and for them to know that we're, we're out there and, and the kind of numbers that are here in town as well, because there's quite a few here. So, thanks. Oh, sorry, that's eight o'clock. We'll be staging on Indiana, kind of near the North Pool. You just find the historical fire truck. That's where we'll be. So, thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Surbu.
Thank you, Mark. I finally did my ride along with Sergeant Solomon as part of the ride along program. Has everybody done theirs already? You've got to do it. I think I got the coolest one so far, maybe second to Councilmember Craycroft, because we actually got to look for a suspect. So I got to get out of the car and went through a store looking for a person, and I felt completely out of, out of sorts, is no, what am I, what am I going to do, right? I'm just walking behind these two officers. But we, I got to experience a couple of really interesting traffic stops, a couple of them very, very respectful. One completely disrespectful. Phone was up right away, recording. Just the, the language on this individual was the most disrespectful. And, you know, the officers handled it with such aplomb, such grace, such dignity. It really does, you know, it reinforces my mind. I could never ever in a million years be a police officer. I just don't have that ability. You know, and I was talking with more of them afterwards. They said they have to have this ability to turn on and off the stress level. I mean, stress is heightened for the job. Stress for one second, next second, you could be talking to a child about something, and they have to be able to manage that. So my hat's off to Sergeant David Solomon. I know you're on vacation this week, but thank you so much. That was a very, very educational thing for me to do. Menchee's grand opening was amazing, and all through the weekend, it was amazing on Saturday from opening until five o'clock, they gave away free froyo. And it was a line around the corner. I tried to go twice, but my daughter doesn't like standing in line, so we, we bagged it. Sunday was busy as well. I finally made my way in there again today. I talked to Katerina. She said this weekend has just been amazing. The outpouring of support from the community blew them both away, herself and Mario. So they're very, very excited to be in our community as a business, and they're really, really happy that the community came out in force and continues to come out in force for them. Heather mentioned Monte Carlo Night this last Friday for the seniors, and that was a blast, was it a blast or what? It was a really, really good time. We had over 70 people from the community come to Monte Carlo Night to play poker, blackjack, roulette, and even baccarat. Baccarat was there. It's a little different of a game, but it's pretty much like blackjack, but you go to nine, not 21. And we had a DJ, and he played a lot of casino hits like Sinatra. And there were even a couple started dancing. So it was a really, really cool time. Everybody had a blast. And, you know, I only came up with the idea for this, but the people that really put the hard work in is staff, and I have to give Tim and Michaela a lot of credit for this, as well as Tess, Ian, Tommy, Allison, Kate, and Catherine. The gentlemen dressed up in suits, the ladies dressed up in dresses, and everybody looked elegant, and it was just an amazing evening. It was catered, there were drinks, there was food. It was a blast. Everybody had a really, really good time. Now it's my chance to embarrass Martin Toth. Last week, I was completely forgetting that Thursday was Juneteenth, and I was doing work as I typically do, and I kept emailing Martin things. And then finally I got a response. He says, don't worry about it, because I finally realized it's today's a holiday. And he says, I'm working. And it just, it put in focus every time there is something to do, you're always working. You don't take a day off. When we had our Economic Development Director leave and we had an open position, you took over that job in addition to being the Assistant Town Manager, Martin. You work harder than anybody I know. You never once mention it. You never once bring attention to it, and you never, ever complain. So thank you for everything you do, and thank you for having this commitment to our town. It means a great deal to us, and you're the man. I appreciate it. And then last but not least, I just wanted to give a quick shout out. Lucky, the gossling that Councilmember Mike Foster and I rescued a couple of months ago is almost full grown. I keep getting photographs from, from people in the town, and it's like my goose right now, although, yeah, so if you see two bigger parent geese with four kind of growing geese in the community, one of them is lucky. I'll post some pictures, but I keep getting inundated with them. I need to do that on Facebook so you can take a look. But other than that, and as for the Fourth of July, I'm just going to do a kind of homegrown the way I did it last year. I'm going to bring my little wagon. I'm going to pack it full of candy. My daughter created these cool little stickers with an eagle on it for the Fourth of July, toss them out to the kids. So it's going to be, it's going to be a great time to watch everybody from the town just, just come out and just, just get back to the community. So I hope you'll all attend. And other than that, I think that's it for me. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Jason. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Couple of things to, to report on, mainly focused on downtown Superior. So kudos to staff, wonderful job with the Superior Summer Market and also on the ribbon cutting on the Superior Civic Space. If you haven't checked it out, the Civic Space is now open. Rooms are available for rent. It's got a really amazing second floor area there for presentations and conferences. So it's just another amenity now for the community to have. We don't just have the Superior Community Center over on the south side of town, but, but now we've got the Civic Space here in the north end of town. So the website is live. You can reserve space, set up meetings. There's a maker space there for kids. It's really, really cool. So you should check it out. Also wanted to say congratulations to Menchee's. I think they picked from a weather perspective, the absolute best time to give out free froyo. Went there Friday for the ribbon cutting, went there again Saturday after the Flyer Swim Meet, when the entire Flyers Swim Team came at once, and they had about 200 hungry swimmers and their parents all ready for free froyo. And the staff just handled it really well with a smile, and they were delighted. And at the time that, that we were there, it was probably around maybe two o'clock, they said that they already had 700 people come through, just that one day. So that was really remarkable. So good job to Superior for showing up, supporting local businesses. Let's continue to, continue to support all of the local businesses that invest in our community. But to that end, one of the things that I've been personally kind of struggling with, I know that a number of people have been struggling with, is, and there were some social media posts on Facebook over the past weekend, is how the parking is being handled in downtown Superior. And I think we really need to have a rethink on how it's being currently utilized. The cell service is terrible in, in downtown. So if we have an app-based service that you are required to sign into before you can park, and you can't actually do so because there's no service, that kind of defeats the purpose. And then if we're enforcing it and actually having the contractor that is enforcing that writing people tickets, that just kind of adds insult to injury. I think right now, what we're doing with parking enforcement in downtown Superior is deterring people from going downtown to checking out new, new businesses. We certainly don't want people's first experience going downtown to be getting a ticket. So my recommendation is until we can ensure that we've got reliable cell service in downtown Superior, we should ax that app altogether. Have some sort of kind of free parking for now, and then we can have a rethink. But I think that the system that we have right now is doing more harm than good. So that's my recommendation on a going forward basis. Couple of announcements. I know we're going to be talking about the pools later in this meeting. There are Flyers Meets. If you haven't checked out a Flyers Home Meet, I really recommend that you do so before we make any decisions on the pool, just to see how it's utilized during a Flyers Meet. So there's a meet tomorrow. It's our hot shot, long shot meet that goes from about eight to one. And then on Saturday, there's another home meet with the, the Elks Swim Team. That's also from eight to one. It's really a well-oiled machine in terms of how the Flyers utilize the pool, but it is organized chaos. And unless you've actually experienced it, you don't really fully appreciate how that pool have every square inch of that pool is utilized during a swim meet. So before we make any decisions on how to spend taxpayer dollars on a redo to the North Pool, I recommend at least have a better understanding of how the pool is used during those meets. It'll help you make that decision. Finally, this was news to me, but next week is the Fourth of July. The summer is flying by. Next Friday is the Fourth of July. So we'll have our Pancake Festival, our downhill mile, our parade. We're looking forward to seeing you all there. The fun will continue at Community Park, and then after Community Park, we're going to head over to the Community Center, where we're going to have barbecue, live music up until 3:00 PM. So I look forward to seeing you all on the Fourth of July. And that's all I've got. Martin Toth, anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing, thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Surbu for the individual recognition, but on behalf, on the behalf of all staff, thank you for the recognition for the hard work that everybody here does. Mayor, you mentioned parking in downtown Superior. You know, the town manager and I and the Public Works Director have been brainstorming some ideas, and we'll come back with some options for policy direction on this. It was unfortunate, but the software that the vendor that we have isn't working right now. And it, so it doesn't matter the cell coverage. The, the software is just down right now. So as y'all are aware, we tried to have a very slow roll up as enforcement and occupancy there goes up, and it might be time to, you know, rethink that and maybe, you know, rethink some of the timelines and work on some options that makes sense, both on the timing side and then also on the enforcement side, recognizing that we want to try to find a vendor that gives us the best value for what we're, what we're doing. And right now, we started at a real minimal level of budget investment in this, and we'll try to find something that makes sense going forward. But we'll look at options and probably have something maybe for you in the digest this week. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Nothing new.
And our Town Clerk, Shannon. Okay, we're on to public comment on our consent agenda presentations and non-agenda items. If you'd like to give public comment here in the boardroom, we've got a sign-in sheet at the desk there. Just give your first and last name and the town in which you reside. You don't need to give your full street address. We take public comment for five minutes per person. If you're participating via Zoom, you'd like to give public comment, just give, give us a raise of the hand on Zoom, and we will recognize you in the order in which we see your hand raised. If you are here for our public hearing, we have a rezoning for the Turnbull property, and you're looking to give public comment on that item, we ask that you hold your public comments until we get to the public hearing item, which is item eight. Other than that, we'll take public comment. Do you have anybody signed up? Come on up.
It wasn't clear. Rodney Mitchell, former resident in Sagamore, currently in Broomfield looking after my mother, is 99 years old. I was of a misunderstanding. I, I was told that you're going to have some public comment about the Turnbull property much later this evening, and I have other commitments. This would be the only time that I'd have tonight. If you'll permit me, I'll try to be brief and to the point.
That's fine.
Okay. I wanted to say, I know that I was here months ago, and I had observed that there was some professionally surveyed, staked, staked out, done on the Turnbull property many, many months ago, and caused me some concern. And I did mention that I was opposed to it. I haven't changed my mind. I have had some nice conversations with Kevin Cohen, who, who is the owner of Guardian Storage. And I think the highlights of what I'd like to convey to you is that when I bought my house at 427 Blackfoot, oh, more than a little, more than 20 years ago, I was told, hey, that property with all that stuff on there is zoned rural residential, single-family house. They can have horses. Don't like the stuff on there, don't buy, but that's the way it's going to be. It's rural residential. Then, what was it, 10, 15 years ago, the turn, the property to the north of that came forward and said, we want to sell our, our property and have the Guardian Storage Unit. We were opposed, many of us. In any case, I was told, hey, you know what? What you're crying about? You've got the Turnbull property between you and Guardian. You've got all that space. So Turnbull property is going to stay residential, and we're going to go forward, and we're going to make Guardian Storage Unit. Well, now, 10, 15 years later, now all of a sudden, I've got the Guardian Storage Unit coming ever closer to my lot. Why is that a bother to me? It should be a bother to anybody who has promised that, hey, you're moving into rural residential. Now I'm going to find that the commercial that I was promised wasn't going to come any closer, and now it's going to come closer. Please, let me say that I have- to come closer. Please let me say that I have spoken with Kevin about this. And I'm kind of giggle in a little way because I think it's kind of a fun story. But I walked Kevin through the complaint or my concern. There's 205 8th Avenue on the south end of Sagamore or close to the south end of Sagamore. It's a property that went up for sale for $1.2 million. It was an estate sale. Somebody passed away. So they're desperate to sell. They cut the price by $10,000 or $15,000 a month and they still couldn't sell that property because it backs up to a storage unit. What does that have to do with Turnbull property? My sob story is this, is that I suffered the Marshall wildfire loss like everybody else in Sagamore. And my other sob story is, is that I unfortunately had State Farm for an insurance company. It has taken me three and a half years to finally settle with State Farm. And suffice it to say, I'm not a fan of State Farm. I really came up short. I've been beat up by State Farm. I've been beat up by the Guardian Storage Unit going into the north of Turnbull. Please don't do this to me. I had an impide. I get it. You're a different mayor. You're a different trustees. But I was told when the Guardian Storage Unit was, hey, Turnbull property is staying rural residential. And now it looks like with the stakes, the surveying, everything that's going on, sure looks like this is almost cut and dried, like you guys are going forward with allowing Guardian to expand closer. I've spoken with Kevin. He has assured me, well, we've got the 30-foot easement. You're gonna, we're gonna go 70 feet. We're gonna put up trees. We're gonna put a fence. Please don't approve this. It doesn't help me. One last concern that I have is that in Sagamore, you have Cherokee come around and meets Blackfoot on the northwest end like it's going right into the Turnbull property. I wasn't able to observe any kind of a plot plan for this proposal, but are we going to have access to the Turnbull property if this is approved through Sagamore on that northwest corner of Sagamore where Cherokee and Blackfoot meet? And other than that, I believe that's everything that I've written that I have concerns around. So I respectfully plead with you, please do not approve changing the Turnbull property from rural residential, where one house could have a barn and horses, to the Guardian Storage Unit. Much love to Kevin Cohen. I've grown to be okay with him, but I really feel that Turnbull property should stay rural residential. Or you, well, we've already spoken of this before and I was told, there's no way the town of Superior is gonna buy the Turnbull property and turn that into open space. I will say one last thing that comes to my mind, and this is it. I told Kevin Cohen, I said, this is great for you and it could be a great source of tax revenue for the town of Superior. How about we do this? Kevin, why don't you buy my lot? Then you can, then I'll just be out of the way and I won't suffer the harm that your thing that you want. And of course, he giggled and said, well, no, I'm not planning on buying your lot, but I will put out a plea for you. If you must approve this, then I'm going to respectfully ask the town of Superior to purchase my lot at 427 Blackfoot because I sincerely believe I will suffer a substantial value loss in that property. So I'll leave it at that. I thank you for allowing me to speak early. Have yourself a good evening. I'm sorry I don't have time to speak when everybody else is going to. But I thank you all very much respectfully.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else here in the council room? All right. Anybody on Zoom? All right. Nobody's got their hand raised. Public comment is closed. All right. We have no presentations tonight, but we've got item number four, which is our project updates. And we've got our Public Works Director, Brandon, welcome back from vacation.
Thank you. Good evening. Let me get the...
We've got a presentation on our public, project update on our Public Works and Parks Ops and Maintenance Facility.
Yes. Good evening, Council, and thank you. Want to give an update as we've done a lot of work since the January 13th contract approval on our O&amp;M facility. The plans have been submitting for building permit, and that's the set of plans that was included in your packet. So we're at that 90% design phase. Comments that come through building permit will obviously include revisions and then we'll go to 100%. So I want to give you a brief update, and I will not be reviewing all 77 sheets, but just want to give you a few highlights as we go through these planned packages. And happy to answer any questions Council may have. From a permitting standpoint, we do have our CLOMER, our FEMA CLOMER permit approved as we were impacting some flood plates. So that approval came very quickly. So that was good. We have submitted for Army Corps of Engineers permit since we will be impacting some of the stream bank area. We anticipate that permit in July. We've not received any comments yet, but we had a good conversation with the Corps and expect that permit soon. For the design drawings, just a reminder, the facility itself hasn't really changed the square footage. We're looking at a 7,400 square foot facility. I'll walk you through our first floor and second floor overview plans. This is the first floor you see here on the screen. We have four bays, three of the bays are drive-through bays where we'll store our VAC truck and other equipment. As a reminder, both pros and public works staff will be using this facility. Our fourth bay has a small bay area and then a wash bay, so our trucks can be cleaned and maintained. We can do general maintenance. We also will have a lift bay as part of the project. It's not shown in this section, but it'll be have equipment where we can lift and do oil changes, et cetera, maintenance. We also have a much-needed locker room and mudroom for our staff, including two showers, both male and female showers, and restroom. So that'll be new as we currently only have one restroom in the entire facility, which isn't in their building. We also have office space for both our pros and public works superintendents. We have equipment storage, tool storage, and then we have a kitchen break room that can also serve as a conference room as needed. Looking at the second floor, the bays remain unchanged. They go all the way to the ceiling. We will have office area for our pros and public works staff. So this will be a cubed area, seven, eight, nine cubes in each office space. They have a place to sit down, do their work orders, do their time sheets in the mornings and afternoons after they finish their work. We also have a large conference room upstairs. It'll be the primary conference room for safety trainings, other trainings, flagger training, whatever training we need to do with the staff, weekly meetings as needed, restrooms, and then open stores that will open to below where we can forklift or raise storage materials and store them on site. Any questions on the building footprint? Jump away from there. I know a lot of you toured the current office space, so the crews and staff are very excited about these upgrades, which are actually moving ahead of schedule.
I have a question about the bathrooms. There's one women's bathroom. So when someone's in there, it's closed. No one else can use that space, right? And then the men's has two toilets and a urinal. Is that, like, does that fit with the expectations of use in the space for the typical people that would be using it?
Yeah. So I think we do have two females. We have one in pros and one in public works currently. I think we have about 15 males working. So historically, it has been a male-dominated field. Of course, we're open to any and all employees that come, but historically, that has been the case. We also designed this shower room with a locking door that has an extra toilet. So the thought process was there that it could be a female shower room that they could use as well as needed. So that's a second toilet area downstairs that also has a locked door behind it.
That's great. Thank you.
That's more based on code-related issues. Like when I used to design prisons, which was a heavily male organization and few female guards, it was based on count. So yeah, it'll be done properly.
And we do have a bathroom upstairs as well, individual spaces. It'll be kind of coed bathrooms with locking doors. I just wanted to look at the site plan improvements briefly. So this is the, just to get you acclimated, this is Honey Creek Drive. We have our park, playdown area, the dog area here. Our current yard waste facility is located here. And then Vargas currently uses this site that will house our O&amp;M building. Excuse me. Vargas will be relocating in August of this year. They're well aware of this. We've been talking about it with them for over a year now. Their facility is off of Broomfield and Interlochen, so they'll still be nearby. It won't affect their operations for town. But it does open up this space for O&amp;M building. Site improvements, we're adding 25 parking spaces as part of the project in addition to what we have there now. This is currently our headworks building at our wastewater treatment plant. Currently, the entry fence to our wastewater treatment plant access gate is roughly here. It will be moved to the west just after our yard waste entry site from that perspective. So this site will be locked and secured. We are completing storm drain improvements, so we will have to put in a water quality pond and features. So all of our stormwater drainage will drain here. There's existing stormwater pond here, but it will be enlarged as part of this project. We have ample space to do that without impacting the dog park. There are two Excel gas and power lines we'll be relocating. We've started that process with Excel and we budgeted for that expense as well. From a landscaping, landscaping perspective, that's where I'm going next. It will be very minimal landscaping. We're not proposing any irrigation as part of this project. We're proposing all zero scape. While we might do public tours of this facility, it will not be a public-facing building. It will be behind a secure access gate for our operations personnel. So take into mind, the only landscaping we're looking at is really rock mulch and then a lot of native grass for our stormwater pond and some native grasses between the building and our headworks building. And that's currently what's there now. It's filled with native grasses. The rock mulch will be addition around the facade of the building. But outside that, we're not planting any trees or grasses that would require irrigation. I did send the building renderings in a weekly digest. Unfortunately, we don't have the color renderings here in this plan set. So you did have the color renderings in that plan set, but really it'll be a kind of a beige building with brown doors. And then we'll have a red accent up front with the town of Superior logo, meeting all of our current logo guidelines and standards. We did hold a public meeting with, well, actually, all the public was invited, but we sent flyers and notifications to the Saddle Brook neighborhood since they're the closest to this facility. And that meeting was on April 29th. Unfortunately, we didn't have any residents attend the meeting and we didn't get any feedback from residents via email on those flyers that were sent out. And we notified the HOA as well. We had our message boards out there. So we would always like to have public feedback, but oftentimes when we get none, it means the concerns may be limited or minimal, which is a good thing associated with this project. From a schedule perspective, we're actually ahead of schedule. We went in for building permits on May 23rd. Building permits have already turned around, some initial comments to the design engineer team. The design engineer team had an estimated early August for building permit approval. We might be ahead of that. It might be in July. But keeping that early August schedule would put us breaking ground in September of 2025. And we have a 12-month construction timeline. So whenever we break ground, we expect to be done 12 months from that day. So looking at September 2026 and move in around September, October of next year. So that's about four months faster than we thought back in January, which is exciting. We have got a guaranteed maximum price update from the contractor, and I'll go over that briefly. We will be getting another one in August. And when we get that, we'll give Council another update with our 100% design drawing, so you know where we're at from a budget perspective. Good news right now is we're at budget, slightly under. On January 13th, we approved a budget of that number right here, $5,292,000. The current GMP is just under that, but it does include $188,000 in contingency that we still have for construction, which is a great thing. I won't go through these each individual items, but the good news is we're at and under budget for the most part. And that's it for the O&amp;M facility. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Council?
Just a quick one. Because like, right, and you know, I think we may have talked about this, you know, when we talked about, like, when we approved the contract. So with the existing fire station, have you started putting pen and paper on what the ideas could be to do with that building? Or just bring that to us later when we've actually got this one built and we can start conceptualizing what to do with that building?
We've had some general conversations. I don't know that we're ready to talk specifics, Leslie, unless you...
No, that's fine.
Have any, but it is something we'll be discussing and looking at with Council and councils have put on.
All right. Thanks.
Brandon, any concerns from a supply chain tariff concern kind of universe that we're dealing with right now in terms of, you know, procuring any of the materials needed for this building? Anything that's, you know, gonna surprise us from a contract perspective? All of a sudden, massive change order because concrete's more expensive than we anticipated? Anything like that?
Great question. Not at this time. They have ordered some items, like the steel building's been ordered already. And shop drawings have been under review. They did have some minor comments. So a lot of these long lead items have been ordered so they can break the ground. These contractors done a lot of buildings for CDOT in the state. So they got their ducks in a row. So far, no issues. Of course, with today's landscape, anything can change, but so far, none. And they've ordered a lot of the long lead times already.
All right. It's good to hear. Any additional questions? Thanks for the hard work on this and thanks for the update.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We are moving right along and we are on to item five, which is our consent agenda. We've got items A, B, C, and D on our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Protam Serbu.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Craycraft. And we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller? Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Serbu?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
All right. Passes unanimously. All right. We're on to item number six, which is CAPS' presentation and recommendation of a mural and resolution for an artist agreement for Rock Creek Parkway Underpass. Welcome, Leslie and JG.
Good evening. Yes, we have a presentation tonight to seek approval for a recommendation for a mural under the new underpass, Rock Creek Parkway. It'll be nice and new and ready for some art. I know that Andrew Vaughn, the president from, or the chair of CAPS, is online. If you have any questions for him, and Liza may join us here in just a little bit. But I'll let JG take over and give the background on how we got to this place today. Oh, I need to pull up. Sorry.
I don't see Drew on Zoom. We are ahead of schedule.
A little bit ahead, so yeah. Is it down here? All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jennifer Garner, Arts and History Supervisor. Some of you may recall last year when CAPS made the recommendation for a mural at McCaslin in that tunnel. At that time, they put out an RFP and had three semifinalists with three different designs. The artists were paid an honorarium. Ultimately, CAPS had recommended and Council approved the current design that's now in McCaslin. This was the second runner up, I guess, I want to say. I think it was really hard for both CAPS and Council to sort of make a final decision because everyone kind of had different likes. That said, the beauty of having paid the artist an honorarium for the design, it's still technically available for use. So that's kind of the good news. So that prevents CAPS from having to go through the entire process of an RFQ and an RFP. The artist is very excited about the prospect of implementing this beautiful design of fox, peonies, and the molecular pattern for coal in the Rock Creek Parkway Underpass once it's complete. Hi, Liza.
Hi. Sorry you guys are really ahead of time.
Come on up.
I have nothing to add.
Oh, okay.
But I mean, I'm happy to say hi.
Yeah, or answer any questions. Liza McKenzie's on the CAPS Committee. She is part of the mural subcommittee. Is there anything else you'd like to add? I'm happy to step back.
I don't know what you've said, but...
Basically up to speed of it being last year.
The only thing that I thought we should add is that there's actually two artists. Susan Madden is the other one. They go by Revel Painting. So it's two women that, we always refer to Hillary because she's kind of my contact. But she said, Hillary said they're flexible as they know the tunnel is kind of gonna be... to be finished whenever it's finished, hopefully within a couple of week timeframe. And she's ready to go whenever we say go.
The only other detail to add is that this design was, because it was intended for McCaslin, it was designed for the 120 foot stretch of McCaslin, whereas the Rock Creek Parkway Tunnel is 140 feet. The artist is happy to, you know, modify the design. We get one more fox. So I think it'll be fun to see the, the posture of that, of that next one. So. Is there anything? Oh, no, not much to add to questions.
And I, and I do see that Drew's joined on Zoom. If he wants to chime in here on the presentation.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, thanks for entertaining this. I don't think I had a whole lot to add to what Liza and JG had presented there, but we're excited to get this up in the tunnel.
Excellent. We appreciate you taking the time to, to join us.
Yeah. Thanks from the East Coast.
All right. Any questions for staff or CAPS?
I'll make a quick comment. So, and this is one of the things that CAPS has gone through evolutionary wise, like we didn't used to have artist agreements and the whole licensing became a big question, but we have a very specific licensing agreement now. So if or when CAPS with the town wants to sell Fox merch, we can do that, right?
Foxy Superior.
Sweet. So really, that's actually not even a question. When we, when we did the mural under McCaslin here, lots of people came out to go watch it. And, you know, I think we, we all did a great job. Are we going to do the same thing with the PR about this going up? You know, this one is a highly walkthrough underpass. And I think everybody's like got pent up demand to start walking through it again once the McCaslin work is done. So just hopefully there's like a PR plan on getting the artist out here so that people know that's happening.
I think we can make that happen for sure. And what I love about this design and the proximity to Purple Park is that it's so whimsical and speaks to a place you'd want to bring your kids. And so, I mean, I'm thinking we can make it into a kind of a family friendly attraction just based on the design, whereas the McCaslin Tunnel, it's kind of a darker, more speaking to the fire and all this kind, these elements. Whereas the whimsy that is this piece really speaks to like a fun, lighthearted place that families will, I think, want to go check out.
And as far as PR and all of that, we will definitely have a time lapse camera on it. The artists are always really good about their own documentation throughout the process. And then comms, of course, will be very supportive and I will work with them directly to make sure that we have consistent information going out. And then they'll probably also come down and do a lot of photography.
Great.
And then last but not least, we, CAPS has been very consistent about hiring a videographer to also document. And we, it's, we already have a really great series of videos when public art is installed as well as the last mural that went in. So definitely lots of fun. And we can also lastly ask the artists to interact with residents when they do come to visit and watch.
I can add to that real quick. When we interviewed our three finalists last time, it was an important question to us every time, if they were willing to engage with the public, if they would mind, if, you know, we had kids walk up to every mural as it was being painted and they were all, all three of them, including Hillary here, were enthusiastic about that. So they welcomed that engagement.
Okay. Great. And then I forgot to mention it, but this is an opportunity for a plug for CAPS's event tomorrow night. Give it to you guys?
Superior pairings.
Yes.
Drawing never dies.
Yes. All right. That's it for me.
One question about, about lighting. So one of the issues with the, the underpass under McCaslin is that it's, it's dark. And I know that we've, we've been talking about correcting that with some lighting. And given that we're, we're renovating the underpass right now, is the lighting going to be better under that underpass versus McCaslin? And then what are our plans to correct the lighting under McCaslin?
Yes, we understand that we are going to have to come in here. It'll be a separate project to come in with lighting after the fact. The lighting for the mural is different, obviously, than the lighting that we traditionally had just to light the ground for the tunnel space. So I'll be working with Brandon on getting the lighting repaired in here as well as where those bollards were right in front of the tunnels on either side. They kept getting hit and why they didn't last so long. So we're going to look at lighting that area with the tunnel lighting as well, rather than putting in the bollards where they continually get hit, so.
And we've had, we treated the mural that's under McCaslin with, with some sort of.
Graffiti guard.
Graffiti guard, right? So we're going to be doing something similar with this, I hope.
Absolutely.
And has that worked? Have we had any, any instances of tagging?
I was down there today and it looks perfect. And I was happy to see the lights are on. So let's keep them on. Otherwise, there's no point spending all this money on.
Right, right. Absolutely.
The art.
Yay. Historically, murals have been known to cut down on graffiti and tagging by 90%.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's beautiful and I'm fully supportive of it. I just want to make sure that it's going to last, right?
Yeah.
And that we're doing everything that is, you know, reasonably smart to do to, to make sure that it lasts.
Yeah.
Recognizing that, you know, it only just takes one, you know, bad apple to try to destroy it, so.
Technically, it's a power wash, but I do know that sometimes when graffiti guard ages, sometimes spray paint can absorb into, especially when it's concrete, which is, you know, has kind of a tactile surface. So that is something that we can definitely keep up on and maybe do test areas.
Requires kind of multiple applications, like periodically, like every.
Like maintenance.
Couple of years.
Yeah.
Re, reapply it?
Yeah.
So let's, let's just make sure that we're, we're doing that.
Yeah. The good thing is, is that without direct sunlight and without foot traffic, it would last a lot longer, unlike the bollards at Community Park that had the eyeballs. That graffiti guard kind of failed and is why we had to basically sandblast those off. Because it, it, the graffiti guard failed because people would stand on them and they were in direct sun, things like that, so.
Councilmember Miller, you've got your hand up.
Yes, just a quick comment and a plug. First of all, I'm so glad that this design came back. This was actually always my favorite, so I'm, I'm really, really excited to see that we're going to get that up around Purple Park. And just another plug, we talked about it at the work session, but I know it was just mentioned that, you know, murals cut down graffiti by 90%. It also helps with crime. So, you know, if you look at this underpass with this whimsical art versus what it would be if it was left alone, it does feel a whole lot safer. So just a plug for us to be looking at that and the other two underpasses as well, so that all of our underpasses have some sort of street art on it, hopefully in the near future.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to add, Councilmember Miller shared this earlier, but maybe that song, What Does the Fox Say, should just play constantly in the tunnel. If you haven't heard it, I highly recommend it. You look it up.
Neighbors will love that. Yeah. All right. Thank you for the presentation and I, Stephanie, did you have something else that you want to say? Your hand's still raised. I'll open it up for public comment here. Anybody here in the boardroom like to make public comment on this item? Anybody on Zoom? All right. Seeing none. Turn it back to council for discussion. I'm 100% in support. I think that this is wonderful. You know, I think back to, you know, where we were 10 years ago in terms of art in our community and, you know, it's, it's, it's taken time. It's been a concerted effort, but I think it's really made a, a positive difference in our community. And I think we should thank our CAPS committee, thank JG and our wonderful staff for working so hard to make sure that we've got these wonderful pieces of public art that I think really improve the community. So 100% in support and especially given the fact that this is just kind of leveraging the previous bids that we had for the mural then here. So killing two birds with one stone, so to speak. So 100% killing two foxes with one brick? I don't know. Let's stop there. All right. Anybody else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to, yeah.
I just want to, I gotta say this, I'm sorry. You do realize this is in an area where there's a ton of geese and foxes hunt geese, right? I mean, this, this mural makes zero sense to me. You know. No, no, no. I don't want to be branded the goose guy because, you know, but it just seems to me there's populations of geese and you're putting a natural predator of geese on this wall here. So it just seems to me like it's a little bit off. And I do realize that you are taking design from the previous one and reusing it. And, you know, I, I want to be the last person in the world to criticize art because knowing as an architect, what it takes to make physical art, I just want to throw that out there.
But we have the fake coyotes out there already.
Are they working?
They work. And then the geese realize that they're not moving, so they, they have to be moved.
Yeah, yeah. And then they're like, yeah, and they're swatting out.
They are creepy.
You know, it's, it's a beautiful design. I, I love, I love the idea. And this was actually my favorite last time, but again, like I said, you were in favor of the other one and I don't want to tell you what to do because you guys know a lot more about art than I do. So it is a beautiful design. I just wanted to be the pain in the ass tonight, bring it up, so.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll keep the actual foxes away. Maybe. I don't know.
All right.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Move to approve Town Superior Resolution Number R-40, Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior approving an agreement for services with Hillary Williams for mural design and installation at the Brock Creek Parkway Underpass.
And we've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw. Second, second from Mayor Pro Tem Serbu. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Serbu?
Yes.
All right. Passes unanimously. Notwithstanding trustees, Servus or Councilmember Servus, Mayor Pro Tem Servus. Objections to the contrary. All right, we're on to item seven, which is consideration of resolution of the Town Council of the Town Superior approving a contract with AD Miller Construction for pre-construction services for the North Pool renovation project. Welcome, Jordan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're back again with another update for you on North Pool. So this is kind of a, we have two items for you. So first we'll do a design update. We have BRS here with us. They'll update you on the schematic design, kind of some sustainability stuff that we're looking at. And then the second item will be approval or hopefully approval of the CMGC contract with AD Miller. And we have Adam Miller here with us if any questions come up for that. So, yeah, so this design update, we are hoping to move forward with design. So we're kind of looking for some, some guidance from you all tonight. So just keep that in mind. We're hoping for kind of the blessing to move forward, so.
Before we get started on, on the design update, I just wanted to, and you can answer this now or at the appropriate time during the presentation, but it would be helpful for me and I think council and the public to kind of understand who's doing what in this relationship between BRS and then AD Miller in terms of the design. And I understand that with the CMGC contract that there is some overlap there. So who's doing what in terms of the design? And then from a timelines perspective, when does the design need to be kind of locked in finalized? Everybody on board for us to hit the targets that we're trying to hit to open next summer?
Okay. I think I'll let Mary talk about the specific design deadlines that we need, but just to talk a little bit about the CMGC process overall. Once we have AD Miller on board, they would start meeting with town staff and BRS in what we call an OAC meeting, owner, architect, contractor. So we'll start getting together, I think, weekly. And AD Miller will get caught up on where we are at design currently. And then they will kind of help, help us along the way with estimating the cost of what the current design is, each step as we move forward, constructability. They'll be kind of the ones that are looking into long lead time items, if we need to start procuring some things, especially get things moving with Excel. So it kind of just helps us accelerate the timeline a little bit. We are working on a tight schedule. So they'll help us with that, keep us on track. Does that kind of answer? So they're not really designing it, but they're helping us with the design.
When, when does the design kind of need to be finalized in order for us to actually move this along? Or when would we be, or at least what is the, the estimated time for us to? Because what we've got today is really like a preliminary kind of schematic, but not a final design.
Correct. I think is it July 4th?
Well, I can speak to the whole schedule.
Okay. You want to let her get in her, her presentation? We'll get to it.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. To answer that question, per our design schedule right now, July 3rd is our submission of our design development drawings, which we are in process right now. So even though tonight you're seeing more schematic, we have still been developing the drawings, moving forward with everything that we can. So we're in design development and then construction documents start and we are planning to have those submitted for permit review by Labor Day. So that Labor Day is our deadline to hand off construction documents. Final design details can be worked out at that point, but it's really July that we need all decisions to be made. Does that help?
So this is our last meeting before July. So basically what you're saying is from, from direction from us, you need green light to go ahead.
Either tonight or follow up from tonight's meeting. Yes.
All right. Well, we'll see. I'm going to telegraph, I've got a lot of concerns about the current design.
Okay. We'll listen to those. First, I just want to run through a building layout update. After our last presentation with you all, we did meet with the park committee. We got some great feedback from them, tried to address any concerns coming out of that meeting. And the result of that, as well as our discussion last time, is the update here to the building, the bathhouse layout. So the changes we've made here is making sure all restrooms are directly accessible off of the pool deck. We won't have anyone soaking wet, going through the lobby to the restrooms. So we have just swapped some of those locations based on our last plan. We also, instead of, we've minimized the enclosure, enclosed area of the existing patio to just the lifeguard office and a kitchen. This lifeguard office is in the location that pool management is very comfortable with it where it is in terms of both visibility and safety from a lifeguard standpoint. We still have the two family changing rooms off of the pool deck. They've just been relocated where they will now be off of a covered breezeway that allows us to also put a wall across for those, for lockers and benches. And we also have the multipurpose room, which is flipped location, but allows us to put a nice garage door that will have access directly to the pool deck as well. The single user restroom that serves the tennis courts year round, we are actually still playing with, we are possibly relocating that to the pool mechanical building, which will be directly to the east of this building here.
Before we go any further, I'm just going to ask a question that's on like everyone's mind in the community. How did we go from a men's room and a women's room to a bunch of single use restrooms? Like I, I've gone back through the surveys, I've gone back through the meeting notes. I cannot recall having this conversation. And I did miss a meeting in, in April, but we didn't talk about the pool. So I'm, I'm kind of scratching my heads because a lot of parents have started writing in like, you know, if there's five kids changing, but there's 15 kids coming out of the pool, what are the other 10 kids do?
Okay. So the idea is that these changing rooms, they are gender neutral. So it saves us on efficiency of space. So there was a lot of waste in the previous locker rooms, but we moved more towards this. It opens up the, the rest of the bathhouse for other programming as well. We haven't had any concerns voiced to us, but we're absolutely willing to hear the arguments.
I don't remember seeing this as a concept presented before. That's where I think everyone's seeing this for the first time, because up until now, we've had women's room and men's room. And it's sort of like, we will fix the poor use of space. And that's been kind of the conversation so far. And it was sort of like, okay, because we all recognize how badly designed those spaces are today. But they're just sort of like, you know, black boxes, like, hey, we're going to fix this. And then this, this came as a surprise to me and to a lot of folks, because this was never conceptualized before. It was always men's room, women's room, gray boxes, and then now it's a single gender, which, you know, again, not to belittle that, it's just, it's a big change.
Sure. Um, it is a big change going from having the separate locker rooms, and we totally understand that. It's an adaptation. The idea here is these changing rooms are going to be fully enclosed rooms. They're not toilet partitions. They are full height, fully insulated walls with solid doors. So they have much more feeling of privacy than what you would typically think of a toilet stall. So the idea is they're really just a changing room. Two of them are quite large. They're five feet by five feet. The others were not able to make quite as large because we have to fit a certain number of fixtures in as well. And then the idea is that the sinks are really the shared area. So when you're at the sinks, you, of course, it will be a gender neutral restroom there.
Can I just stop you for a second? So here's, here's where I see the problem. So you've got doors, right, on each of these stalls?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Men don't always close the doors when they go to the bathroom if they're just going to pee. Okay? You've got little girls going into a gender neutral bathroom, and then you have full grown men not closing the doors, not going to work. Not going to work at all. 100% opposed to this, will not happen. I will vote no. Like, we're not doing a gender neutral bathroom in the bathhouse. We have to do men's and women's lockers separate.
Okay. Here you. We will redo the plan.
Yeah.
I would like to add, though, that there should be an option for a gender neutral bathroom.
This single user bathroom here, 100% is a great idea and is a gender neutral bathroom, accessible from the outside, accessible year round. Love that idea. I think it's a great addition, but this concept won't work.
No, and I think the family changing rooms could be used the same way as well.
Yes.
You know, anybody can use those irrespective of gender. It's more of the inability for somebody to find sort of privacy within their own gender if they wanted to. Or, and my biggest concern is that seven kids get out of the pool at the same time. Two of them really have to go to the actual toilet, and then they've got to wait because people are just using the rooms to change. So that, that caught me off guard because I've never seen this at a pool, but I've also not, like, I feel like I go to a lot of pools, but I've just never seen this at a community pool.
Yeah, we hear you. And if that's a nonstarter, then we will address that.
The, so you can continue with the presentation. The other thing that, and I know that some, some of these elements were, obviously in the presentation that we, we saw back in May, but the more that I've thought about this building, I really think that we're losing a tremendous amount of usable space if we use a multipurpose room. And I know that Neil, you brought this up during the May 12th meeting, that, you know, it's like a potential for wasted space because it's just not going to be utilized all the time. So right now, kind of my general opinion is I don't think we need a multipurpose room. I think we do need men's and women's locker rooms. I'm questioning whether we need family changing rooms. I guess I'm open to that, but that also seems to be taking away a lot of space here. So, you know, you can continue with the presentation, but I, I really question the need for a multipurpose room. I'm questioning the need for family changing rooms if we're going to have the men's and women's locker rooms. My, my thought right now is if the single user, because right now, this is the women's locker room, right? And this is the men's.
Yep.
And if we're cannibalizing some of the space from this locker room in order to accommodate the single user, I'm fine swapping the men's and women's locker rooms and basically having a smaller men's locker room and then having a larger women's locker room because they need more stalls. And, you know, men have, we have urinals that, that don't need as much space as, as the individual toilets. And I think we can kind of keep the orientation of the building the same in that we'd have, you know, men's, men's locker room over here, single user over here, women's locker room over here, and then figure out what to do with, with this space and/or this space. I also don't like the idea of losing any of the patio. So.
That was a big thing that we got in a lot of emails. They don't want to lose the patio for the cookouts for the kids after the pool.
Well, it's also, it's also really used, anytime we have adverse weather, if we have lightning in the area, people take shelter underneath the patio. So like, I think we need to have some, it's not just for, you know, the swim team to use for concessions.
I'm just going to add, and this is what makes your job really hard, because you get, today it's only six of us, but you've got six ideas, and we all have slightly different ones. And I understand what, you know, may end up looking like Frankenstein, because I actually like the family changing rooms, right? You know, as a parent of a girl, you know, when she was really young, it's like, where do I go? So the family changing rooms are super helpful in that sense. I just think that they're very large. I think they could be a half the size and, you know, still function exactly the same way. 60 square feet is enough to roll in with a stroller and get everybody changed and so on. But I do agree with what Mayor Laces said, the multipurpose room, I don't think it serves a need. Five years ago, before we had the community space, now we've got the community space at the Superior Community Center, we've got the civic space across the street. I do know that people want to do, you know, events and parties at the pool, but they're going to do them next to the pool. So I think we could live without the multipurpose space at the pool. And that, you know, frees up, you know, men's room, women's room, and at least a couple of family changing rooms. Or, you know, any, it's a gender neutral bathroom at that point, I think, is my thought on how to proceed.
Yeah. So going back to men's and women's locker rooms, we won't have the space for a multipurpose room, so that will probably be the space that goes. The family changing rooms are the only place right now we're planning to have showers in this version. So they have a toilet, sink, shower, and bench for changing. And we have laid out a lot of these in a lot of pools, and 100 square feet is, is about the size you need to meet all of your ADA clearances in those rooms because we've included the shower. Would you prefer the showers go back to being inside the men's and women's locker rooms like I, like they are today? Is there a preference there?
I mean, I, I really don't think that you need a shower in a family changing room. I mean, it seems like that would be something, I mean, I don't think you need a family changing room generally, but.
If someone like Neil or myself were to bring our daughters, and they're little, we can't let them go by themselves in the bathroom. So I'd definitely be.
Yeah, I mean, I know that my wife brought our sons into the women's locker room if she needed to change, you know. But, okay, I mean, it's a fair point, but maybe, maybe, maybe we don't need as much space. And, you know, if we're, if we're preserving, you know, this area as a men's locker room, this area is the, the women's locker room. If we are, and we haven't talked about this yet, but right now, this is currently the mechanical.
Yes.
For, for the building. If that's going to be moved to a separate structure outside of the, outside of this building, and so now we have this space, you know, maybe then this space can be, you know, the lifeguard area and, you know, kitchen. And then, you know, maybe it can be used as a family changing. Or maybe this single user restroom could be a family changing, you know, maybe we can make it a multipurpose thing that's a, just a little bit bigger, that it's a, a family changing. But I don't, I don't think that we need a shower in a family changing room regardless. I think that the showers can go in the locker rooms.
Yeah, I hadn't, and again, I haven't, I didn't go on all the pool site tours, so I don't know kind of where these things are headed, but I'm just sort of accustomed to having, you know, a shower in the, in the locker room just to rinse off the chlorine. So that, that's a little bit of news to me post-swimming. So I'm, you know, I'm in favor of keeping the showers in the men's room and the women's room. Family changing area, you know, when we used to go to the Lifetime Lakeshore, we used it all the time, the shower. So it's, I want showers everywhere, I guess. I don't, I don't quite know. And I, and we're giving you a box, throwing everything in the box, and you got to try to figure out how to make it all fit.
You can continue. Sorry for the curveballs here.
Um, well, we just had a small update on the budget here as well, based on our schematic design package. This came through a few weeks ago, so we just wanted to give you the update on the right here, right in line with about where we were when we gave you the original rough order of magnitude cost at 4.55 million. Now we are at 4.527. These will continue to change as the drawing develop, the drawings develop, but we are in line here. The difference here was the new pool mechanical building was broken out since it is a new building as a separate cost. Previously, it was expanding, the existing mechanical room was incorporated in this aquatic replacement cost. So that's the difference there in the line items.
So just a question before we, like, so 600,000 for a new mechanical building, and correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds really cheap. Like, if we're building a ground up building, new plumbing, new everything for half a million bucks? Is that kind of what we're thinking? Okay.
Yeah, it's roughly about 1,000 square feet.
Yeah.
It will have the chemical storage in there, and that's not the equipment itself, it's just the building itself.
Just, okay. I'm just thinking about, you know, all the concrete work that's going to have to get done to run all the piping and everything, because I'm assuming that's going to get run below grade.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yes, the new water entry will come into this building, and then will get run below grade to the bathhouse.
And then there's like eight trees around this space?
Yes.
They're all going to get cut down?
They are hopefully not. We are looking to preserve as many of those as we can. So we're pushing this up as close onto the deck as we can, so that hopefully a bunch of them will be preserved and we'll redo the seating area there for the tennis courts.
There's some pretty thick, like hedge.
Yeah.
Bushes, you know, that, between where the pool deck and, and the trees start. So I think we could lose some of the shrubs.
Yes, that's kind of about where we'll be locating the building.
Without taking out a big tree.
So another thing that came out of our meeting with the park committee was some additional proposed aquatic amenities that we wanted to be seen, considered in a concept plan to understand the impact and help you all kind of make a decision. One of these items would be a slide at this pool. So we are showing here is a slide with a runout that, it comes with a 25-foot tower with a stair, which would require a lifeguard at the top of it. But since it's a runout, no lifeguard at the bottom, and taking up, it's about 165 linear feet for that slide there. So just showing the impact to the pool deck, not that the location shown would be the only possible location, but we wanted to analyze that, the impact to the deck here without planning to expand the existing deck at all. Next was consideration.
Can I just stop you there for a second?
Yeah.
So at the, I went back and, because I was surprised to see this get added into this design, because at the last meeting that we had in May, the recommendation from BRS was not to include the slide at the north pool and to include it at the south pool because we didn't have the room for it. So is this included here just because of meeting with our park committee?
Correct. We still have the same recommendation, but we're asked to put this together as an exhibit just to go through the.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering where it came from because it wasn't the previous recommendation.
I think there were a lot of asks for it at the open, the community, like with the community engagement piece, were asks for a slide at this pool. So it wasn't just park, that's all.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that there were, there were asks, there were asks for everything, everywhere, right? And that's the difficulty of this endeavor. It's like, you've got two existing pools, make them awesome, you've got a limited budget, I want all of the amenities, but do all of the things that happen to be contrary to each other, right? Like, make this one adult friendly, make this one kid friendly, but don't make that one kid friendly, make this one adult friendly. And at the same time, you know, we just have contradictory directions. So it was, yeah, so it's still your recommendation that the slide doesn't fit here.
Yeah, we do think that's more aligned with the public engagement, at least from the results of the online survey and the public open house. Now, we do understand there's also been a lot of other, you know, communications, there's word of mouth, there's emails that might say otherwise, but from what we've seen. I would say, to us, it seemed there'd be twice as many people asking for the north pool to not have these amenities as there were to add them. So the hot tub also being another item that just came out of that meeting. And this would be about 2,000, 200 square feet. Again, just studying the impact on the pool deck, required clearances around it, it would start pinching our deck to be about 10 feet, 14 feet or less on that side of, of the hot tub. And the third item here was a zero depth entry waiting pool instead of the splash pad. So we have the splash pad included in that budget. This would be changing the splash pad to more of a waiting pool. And I have an image to show you too, to kind of understand what that might look at, look like. These are the associated costs for each of these amenities. So this would be above the 4.5 budget that we have shown you. Again, just to help with any decision making. The last item was a diving board. We're not showing it in the diagram here. It would be about 1,800 square feet of, of diving well added to the site and the cost here associated with doing that. The option is either rip out a majority of the existing pool to make it all deeper or do a separate diving well. That would be about 1,600 square feet, which is roughly kind of the size of the bathhouse. Just understand that. So this kind of being an image of what's representative of the splash pad, also, we do like that it could stay open beyond the pool hours, so it's a little more, more accessible feature. This is about the concept for the scale of the zero depth entry waiting pool. So you've got zero depth on one side and goes down to about 18 inches depth of water on the deep side and can have some geysers and play features and such. So it would still feel like a, very much an upgrade into the existing waiting pool. Just a difference in how those function, how, how they're staffed, this would have to be lifeguarded, and whether it's open or not during the pool hours.
So, and that's the thing that struck me is the lifeguard in this picture. So it would need to be lifeguarded, but it couldn't be the lifeguard who's watching the other pool, just swiveling back and forth, because that's nowhere near safe enough. This would have to be basically a new position that we would have to staff for a zero entry pool.
You don't lifeguard the south pool.
No, that's.
Yeah, well, that's because this goes to 18 inches deep, so it is deeper than the existing waiting pool.
Okay.
So it has to do with that, that deeper water there. So not, it doesn't have to have a dedicated person, I don't believe, just someone close enough that they can keep an eye on both pools.
Okay.
This is the scale and about an image of what the hot tub would be, about 200 square feet. And then this is an image representative of the slide. This is of two. We, we have just shown one in the pricing and the exhibit. So really what we just need from you all is, are we to proceed with any of these options that were requested that we study? Or do we want to keep these things for the south pool?
One of the questions around the spa was this, like the trade off with sort of radiant heating for the water, like, you know, there's the potential need for a heat sink. Is that still the case? Like, if we do the radiant heating, then we still need this heat sink and that, and arguably, you're getting one because of the other? Or if we don't do the radiant heating because it's got its own challenges, then, you know, the whirlpool's more a discreet decision?
Um, we don't need the hot tub for that if we have the splash pad or some other, and other like nighttime aeration, so it's not like a necessity.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I feel, my, my personal opinion is, I really appreciate the job that you guys are doing, and it's a very difficult job because you're trying to answer to so many different voices and opinions on how to make this facility work. My personal opinion is, I don't think that the slide or the hot tub should be included in this. I just don't think that we have the room. I think, and that's what we heard at the last meeting in May, was that the north pool is smaller than the south pool. You know, if we want to include some like additional upgrades for the south pool, and we got some emails about that as well, like, keep the south pool more family friendly as the activity pool, and this is the more, you know, athletic pool, right? The, the lap lanes. So my recommendation would be to put the, the slide features at the south pool, put the hot tub potentially at the, at the south pool as well. I do like the, the waiting pool. I think that that's a good upgrade and something that we should, we should consider. And then separately, we can have the discussion about like kind of the layout of the, the can have the discussion about like kind of the layout of the, the, the building itself. But, and then, yeah, a diving well, we don't have the budget for that. I don't think that we want to go there. I don't think that that makes sense. In terms of, can we go back to the general layout of the actual pool? And I do want to open up for public comment. And, yeah, Stephanie's got her hand up. And also, we were going to talk about the, the contract with AD Miller. So we can get into that as well. But, you know, I think, you know, this, this hot tub is, you know, potentially cannibalizing from the space that right now the swim team uses. And that was one of the things that was important to the swim team because that's where the diving blocks and the, the grills and all of their equipment is stored. So I'm kind of worried about the hot tub. And it just, I don't think it fits there. And then this also is just going to take away from just the deck access. And it just doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit. I think that the, the mechanical building over here is a good upgrade. And just in terms of configuring this building, can we go to the, the schematic of just the actual building itself? My, my preference as of now would be not to close in any of the patio, to leave that open. Right? So we're losing the space. So if we want any of these rooms, we got to figure out how to fit it in the rest of this. And my recommendation would be to, to keep this area, the women's locker room, keep this area, the men's locker room, have the single-user restroom over here. Maybe that is a single-user restroom slash family-changing area. So we're... Potentially, but we're, we're killing two birds with one stone. And then over here, we could have, we could have a lifeguard's, you know, office here. So they have clear visibility of the pool. And then we can somehow like incorporate the kitchen back in this area. So I would do like lifeguard area here, maybe kitchen like that because the kitchen currently runs like this. And so I would try to squeeze in the kitchen. But I, I just, I think that we're changing too much and we're trying to fit too much. And it's just going to end up not working if we have a multipurpose room that I don't think is, is necessary. And, and certainly these, you know, well, we already talked about the, the gender-neutral bathrooms. I don't think it's going to work. So that's kind of the, the direction that I'm headed for the north pool. And then in terms of incorporating a lot of these other amenities, we can focus them at the south pool, which where I think we have more room for them. And also, as we discussed at the last meeting, I don't think we need the EV stations. That was in the, the budget as well. But do we want to discuss, yeah, discuss this kind of further and try to see if we can get some alignment? Or do we want to open up for public comment? Oh, sorry, Stephanie.
Thank you. Just a few comments. I 100% agree on the layout of the building that you just went through, Mary Laces. I think that makes a whole lot more sense. And I, I recognize parents' comments that they do not want young girls in with, with grown men. So I'm glad to hear that you brought that up. Just a few comments about the layout of everything on the deck. I went through last night and I read through each individual written feedback that we got through the surveys and public engagement, as well as tallied all the emails that we've gotten regarding the pool. And I know we have had a few residents say that they want some kid-friendly features at the north pool. But when you look at the overarching percentage of who's saying that versus a lot of people saying that they want to keep it more a sports pool or more of a relaxing pool as opposed to, you know, a water park, it's three times more. So just want to make sure that everybody's aware of, we've gotten a lot of public feedback, the feedback to keep this one more sports-oriented or more of a relaxing pool versus the south pool, which is a lot more exciting and smaller kid-friendly. That's three times the amount that, that people have said that they want that. So just want to quantify that for everybody. One question I have regarding the kiddie pool because I know that Park had mentioned the splash pad where it's located is a little more shaded. So that might be kind of chilly for kids. So I think it might make sense to have that kiddie pool. And I know the cost for that was 600 to 750,000 dollars. I'm wondering if that's 600 to 750,000 above and beyond what the splash pad was going to be? Or how much was the splash pad going to be? So we can kind of see the delta there of what more the waiting pool is going to cost.
No, that's a great point because the splash pad was included in the budget. The delta is 125,000 roughly.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't be 750 or 600,000?
Right, not on top of the budget, correct? Because that would just be in addition if you go that direction instead of the splash pad.
Okay, perfect. That's helpful. And then, Mark, I've got a question regarding 7B, which is the fee schedule. Should I bring that up now? Or are we going to talk about that later? And should I put a pin in it?
I mean, you can, you can raise it now. We're, we're going to still go through AD Miller's presentation. So if you, if you want to raise it now, that's fine.
Okay. Just the change order markup free zone, which was $20,000. Is that if we have change orders that happen throughout the process? And so if we don't use it, that's not spent? Or is that money that we would be paying upfront? And if we don't spend it, we're reimbursed? Or how does that work for how you anticipate the change orders happening, if at all?
Okay, so I think Adam can correct me if I'm wrong. But the, the free zone, that $20,000 plus or minus would be basically that they won't mark up the first $20,000 worth of change orders if we were to have change orders. So the markup on those would be zero. And then once you get outside of that free zone, then the markup goes into effect like any other construction project.
Okay, perfect. That's helpful. Thank you. Yeah, from my seat, I would say, you know, hot tub, as much as I personally would love a hot tub, talking to, to staff, it sounds like that's a bit of a nightmare to try to maintain and keep open. And so I would be fine totally nixing that. And then I think the slide and the diving is, is just taking up deck space that we would need for, you know, swim meets or people to be able to just kick back and relax. So I think the kiddie pool makes sense over the splash pad and looking at putting splash pads more in parks to keep kids cool. But for this application, it did sound like for parents to be able to have younger children, it would be better to have the, the little zero-depth kind of kiddie pool. That's it for me.
Do you have any thoughts on, on the design and the layout of the building?
I agree with you as far as, you know, what you basically went over right before I started speaking. 100% agree with all of it. So no need to reiterate. But basically just moving the bathrooms down, getting rid of the, the community room, moving the, the kitchen and the lifeguard area up to where right now, one of the, the communal bathroom essentially is. And making sure that that deck space is open, that covered deck space in case of, you know, inclement weather and just to be able to have, you know, room to move around.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Stephanie. One, one additional, can we just go back to the building schematic that I forgot to add? One thing that I think was raised in Park's comments and I think tried to be incorporated in some of these ideas here is, you know, the, the idea of, you know, right now, in order to access the women's locker room, you have to walk through the building. So you're, you know, you're walking through with wet feet and, and that's not ideal. So if, if there's the potential for exterior access to both of the locker rooms, I think that that is preferable. There already is on this, this side, the men's room. You, you access it right, right through here right now. And, you know, and then you just, you exit into the, into the cupboard patio here. But if there is maybe access on this side, you know, right now where we've got the single-user access point, if there is an access over here, right now, we have kind of a sidewalk on this side of the building that is fenced off. So you can't access it from over here, but you can access it from the pool. It's kind of underutilized. Might be something to, to consider.
Yeah, we'll make sure both have access from the lobby and the pool deck side.
Good.
I do have a few, a few quick sustainability items, just because we are looking for a little more direction there. I'll go over this quickly. But this also, we met with the ACES committee as well and got some good feedback from them, also some requests. So going all-electric, for the bathhouse itself, we are currently planning on doing the heat and hot water, domestic hot water systems to be electric for the bathhouse, knowing that's, you know, an important goal. For the pool hot water, it gets much more complicated. When you're looking at an electric boiler, we would have to be upgrading our electrical service even more. And you're talking about some pretty massive infrastructure to get to not only 208 service, which is what we currently will upgrade to for this project. We will have to upgrade to 480 service. So there's a little bit of timing, scheduling, and obviously costs associated with that. There is another option to do electric air-to-water heat pumps. They are installing these in Carbondale right now on their all-electric outdoor pool. There are six of them. But what we have heard from different groups is that they are very loud. So they are not really recommended for pools that are near houses because you would potentially get a lot of complaints about the noise. We also know that going straight to a gas-fired boiler is not necessarily in line with your sustainability goals because you would be signing up for gas for 20, 30 years with a new boiler. Even though, it would probably be in the range of about 98% efficient and your current model is probably 60 to 70% efficient. So we've been asked to study more of a combination system. Is there a way we can do an electric and gas boiler together? What are the costs? What are the energy usage? What's the savings? What's the overall impact? So we have brought on a sustainability consultant to do that analysis and we expect the results in two to three weeks. So that's something, once we have those results, it will show your future estimated energy costs, usage for gas and electricity to hopefully then help determine whether that's the direction we want to go or do we want to stick with the baseline design right now, which is the gas boiler. So we just want you to know that's coming. We're working on it to help make some of these decisions. As it comes, as it pertains to the solar hot water, we are hearing from all of our consultants and others that almost every project that used, has used solar hot water has decommissioned it. The operating and maintenance is so intensive that towns and cities aren't able to really keep up with the maintenance required. So there's just so many kind of detrimental things that can happen to those systems. We're not prepared to really, really recommend that on this project. Even though it's a great sustainability option for some projects, it's just not, not for an outdoor pool. So that's where kind of our recommendation there. But we would like to know from you all, is that something that you would like to understand the energy usage and cost of a system similar to how we're doing the electric and gas analysis? Kind of knowing that many of these systems don't last long at all and have been decommissioned and those projects have gone back to using gas.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the recommendation from our last meeting was that the solar heat doesn't work in Colorado, basically for a municipal pool.
Yeah, I mean, when you need the heat, you've got the sun. But once, when you, when you need the heat, you don't have the sun and it, there's too much heat and you have to have somewhere to get rid of the heat and it overheats the system.
Right. Like this, this past weekend, we would have a, a hot tub.
Yes.
That would be unswimmable.
Yes.
So...
So we just wanted to make sure that we're aligned though in that decision, that we're not proceeding with that for this project anymore.
I appreciate you kind of bring that up. And I was, I was covering for ACES, I guess, two weeks ago. And, you know, our ACES team is an amazing group of experts, like literally experts in these fields. And this had them tied, tied up in knots, right? Because, you know, they know the direction we want to go and they know the challenges of getting there. One question they did raise, and I'm curious if you were able to get an answer from Excel, could you even get 480 KWH support here? Like, can Excel even do that? Because if, if that's a no, then everything after that is an easy answer.
It's not a no yet, but we don't have confirmation on them yet. And we have now been assigned a project manager from Excel. So we hope to get some of that soon.
All right. I mean, because I, you know, having sat in on the ACES conversation, I mean, and I know we have a sustainability action plan and everything else. Unfortunately, and it's the same issue with the O&amp;M building, you know, gas heat is just still very efficient, especially at 98% efficiency. You're still getting a greater return on the investment. You're using a heck of a lot less gas than you are right now. So, I mean, I, I kind of, I'm not happy about it, but, you know, ultimately the market hasn't caught up to what we need in terms of heating large volumes of water or space efficiently. And this is, it's just not there.
Yeah.
So I think where you're headed is the right direction. I think when it comes to, you know, domestic hot water and going into the, the heat pumps and everything else that were identified at ACES is the right direction. But for trying to heat the massive unit that is the pool, gas is probably the, the smartest way to go.
Now, we still are waiting on that analysis of the electric versus gas, if that's something you still want to see.
Absolutely. I mean, I think we've got to be able to justify it relative to our sustainability plan, why we're not pursuing it. But I think it is, you know, still, you know, I kind of anticipate where it's going to come out. So I'm, I'm ready to go in the direction of gas, but at the same time, I do want to see the numbers. And I think our ACES team, you know, I think that was their ask is to help, you know, be part of that conversation.
And I think with a lot of the other changes we're making with upgrading equipment and things to the bathhouse, that we have a good chance of showing that 18% in, in savings anyways over the last six years. So, you know, we're certainly making it more efficient anyways. Okay, so that concludes my portion.
I, I think also with, with the, I mean, I'm interested in, in understanding like the costs associated with like these additional sustainability, not, not the, the solar, but, you know, the, the electric heat options. I think for, for, for my, my preference would be for us to not be like guinea pigs and doing something that like hasn't been done before. Like if we're like the first municipality to try to like, you know, launch something like this on a, on a municipal pool, that seems like a recipe for things to break. And, and then we're going to have to tear it out and put in something that actually works, which is, you know, less sustainable in the long run. So like, I'd rather us be leveraging, you know, 98% efficiency sounds great, something that's actually going to be built to last and that's not going to break and that's going to be reliable. And that is something that we can get parts for and not blow our budget with, you know, crazy asks from, from Excel. So I'm curious to know the, the, the delta and all that stuff. But I think, you know, generally speaking, I, I err on the side of go with the traditional boiler that is 98% efficient and will last.
That will also be the simplest type of system in terms of operating it and maintaining it.
Right.
And when you do get into mixing different systems, if we mix electric and gas, it just, it gets a little more complicated to run. But we'll kind of provide, you know, the ins and outs of that along with the costs.
All right. Jen, did you have a question?
I, well, not about this, but about the, the, the building itself.
Yes.
So... No, I'm fine. So the, my concern, so I love, I like the zero entry. That was tough when it, it's not like that now. But my ask would be that if there's a family-changing room with a shower, that it is closer to where the waiting, like the pool, the kiddie pool is and not having, you know, when kids get out of pools, they don't like it. And so getting a family with multiple kids to go all the way around to, the suggestion was to maybe put it back there. I just would want to find a way to keep it close to where the waiting pool is, or at least over where people's stuff are. Because just the thought of, you know, multiple kids crying and getting them around the building over to a shower that they don't want to get into anyway. So like whatever can happen to keep it close to where their small kids are actually going to be, would be, I think, really helpful. Also, I mean, if the north pool is, like a lot of the comments were about keeping this more adult-focused or sport-focused. So is that the best place to spend the money to put in a kid pool if it's going to be? I'm just asking, like, I, I don't know what parents would do with their kids if they didn't have it there. But it's a big investment to kind of anti the feedback of making this a more focused for sports teams or adult swim. So...
I do think the existing waiting pool does get used. So this is just replacing and upgrading that versus adding an additional, you know, amenity or feature. But, you know, I leave that up to you all, I guess.
I, I think the hot tub too, it's like, no. I know that people would love to have a hot tub somewhere if they don't have one. But I'm, I'm mostly just concerned about staff being able to keep, like, I feel like it'd be closed half the time anyway because of whatever happens in there and trying to manage the requirements for keeping that safe. And I, and someone wrote in an email that it's just going to be full of kids going back and forth between the pool and the hot tub anyway. So I just don't see taking that away from the flyers you used to have it there. No, yeah.
Question, I'm old enough to say that that's where my kids actually spent their young years, is at that pool. Because we didn't have the south pool yet. So we spent a lot of time in that littler person area. Question would be, and my thought is if we're not putting walls or building something where the patio is, is there some cost savings that might offset the smaller pool going in? I guess I'm hopeful in the budget that the numbers might come a little closer and we're not spending more money on that pool than...
Yes, there's certainly a chunk of this money is for enclosing a part of that patio. So if we're not doing that, there will, this number, there will be some savings there for sure. We'll have to look at it again.
Oh, yeah.
And redo all the pricing, but...
Yeah, sorry. And not holding you to anything. I guess I'm just more hopeful in that. But I would agree and defer to... But I would agree and defer to those that are using that pool more often these days. But my other question was in regards to shade. If we're taking out the amenities, if we all agree that's the way we're not going, obviously shade is replacing a lot of that space, correct? Shade structures or?
Yeah, we do have additional shade structures currently planned for the north side.
Okay.
We have some trees up there, but, you know, putting it more on the deck there. So we have shades, additional shades in the budget, yes.
Can we go back to the site plan of the pool? So one of the things that was asked about at the May meeting was the possibility for a west gate access point here, just because we have, you know, currently, like, you know, families set up on the lawn here, and then they want to walk in to watch their swim, swim or swim. We have a bottleneck right here going through this little single access point. So that was one of the things that we talked about as a potential access point that might not be used for normal swim days, just when the public's using it, but just for swim meets when we have large groups. So I'd like that, to see that considered still in the design. And then another thing that was just asked about from the swim meet folks was just the need for electrical and internet access connection points on this kind of southeast end. So.
Yeah, so because our new building is going there, we'll be able to do some exterior outlets like into there and can look at how we'll set them up there. We're also planning to extend their storage shed to that area, so they'll get all new space in there. We can put whatever they need there. And the gate is currently in our drawings and in the budget. So it's gone in there. We'll review the final location of it later on.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you for the presentation. Jordan, you want to turn it over to A.D. Miller?
Yeah, so we don't really have a presentation from A.D. Miller. I kind of just wanted to add that in since we're doing the design update. We kind of just wanted to make sure you guys understood what the CMGC, we already, you already asked a couple of questions on that, just to make sure you knew what we were looking at and what the plan was. So just to talk about it a little further. So this portion, this agreement, is for the pre-construction phase. So that's when they're going to work alongside BRS and the town. And then once they, once we get further along into the construction documents, A.D. Miller will give us a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP, and then we'll bring that back to you, and that'll be an amendment to their agreement that you've seen now. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. And then we do have Adam here, if you have any questions for them. But we selected them based on their experience. They're super capable. They've done a ton of projects in Colorado for pools. Mary mentioned the Cartmandale Pool that's all electric. That is one of their projects that they're working on now. So we just overall found them the most qualified and super excited to work with them, so.
One additional, a couple of additional questions. Right now, we're, as I understand it, at least based on the item from A.D. Miller's present, well, not presentation, but deck in the packet, we're budgeting for an all-new deck. Is that correct? All new concrete?
Yes, new concrete.
All right. And then one, one question that I had at the May meeting that I, maybe I didn't ask it well, but, so there was, obviously, a lot of, one of the resident feedback points that we heard from a lot of people was the idea of having flexibility for the north pool so we could expand the swim season into the spring, into the fall, and then potentially into the winter year-round. So in terms of the budget and all of the mechanical, like capital costs that we're spending to update this, the question I have is, are we updating this pool and giving ourselves the flexibility to keep it open year-round? Or are the capital expenditures that we're making limited in that we're only going to be able to maybe extend the swim season to, say, like April, March on the early end, and then September, October?
I think that's more what we're looking at, rather than the complete year-round. And Mary, I don't know if you want to speak to that. I do think you asked a question in the last meeting about whether or not the building being insulated and made year-round, if that was included in the price. And I think we told you no, but the answer was yes.
All right, so the building is year-round, but the pool is not?
Correct.
It would, it would require larger or more equipment than we're currently planning for, just to heat the pool year-round on the coldest days. So we're not currently planning for that equipment. So in the future, if you wanted it to be operated year-round, you would have to add that additional equipment.
I think it would be good to just know what that delta is now, because if we're doing the work now, and it's an extra $250,000 that gives us the flexibility to keep it open year-round, that would be something that I think would be at least a consideration. If it ends up being like, it would be an extra $1 million that we need to spend to keep it open year-round, and we actually don't have, like, a recommendation from our Parks and Rec Department that we're going to do this, and we don't necessarily have, you know, demand, you know, then at least we're making a conscious decision about it. What, I just don't want to spend all the money on the north pool and then have residents say, well, why didn't you, you know, build it year-round and not have an answer for them? Like, so if the answer is going to be, well, actually, it would cost us, you know, X amount of dollars to do that, and that wasn't in the budget, then at least that's an answer. But we don't know what that X dollars is.
And just to clarify, you're looking for capital costs upfront, not the operating costs.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I'd want to add on like both, right? Because it's, when everybody, like, you know, Mark alluded to earlier, everyone filled out the survey and said, I basically want a Christmas tree. I want everything, and everything is going to be given to me for free. But, you know, if we can easily say incremental million in capital, and then to run it in December is going to cost us $100,000 versus in July, it costs us $50,000. It's a very easy answer to demonstrate. You know, we got $18 million or $17 million from the bond. We carved out five for the pool, but you're asking us to spend another million, and plus, we're going to take money from everything, you know, for the next 20 years, just to run it in, you know, like, October, November, December, January, where, you know, three people might be swimming. I'm truly interested in adding a couple of months at both ends. So, you know, what you laid out helps us do that. And then we've got the economics to do that, but to go for those cold four months, you know, what's the incremental cap X and op X, I think, makes it very easy to have that conversation in terms of what does this truly cost a community over the next 20 years to do?
In the, in the presentation that we saw in May, I think we had the operating expenditures, and basically, the ballpark number was $50,000 per pool to operate per month. And in the summer months, more of that is spent on personnel than it is on heating.
Right.
And in the winter months, the assumption would be we would have fewer lifeguards, but we would spend a lot more on heating. But it basically balances out to about $50,000 a month to keep the pool open. So I'm fine kind of using that as like, okay, if we want to keep it open year-round, that's $600,000 per pool. But what I, what I don't know is the capital, mechanical expenditures, you know, that would give us the flexibility to do so? Like, I don't know what we're building it to and what we could build it to to keep it open year-round.
Yeah, we'll get you that delta.
Okay. Right, because the new main building will be insulated, but then, you know, are we also insulating the mechanicals building as well to run that in the winter?
Um, it would have to be more so than we're currently planning for.
So it's not just the equipment, but it's also the mechanical rooms that have to be upgraded slightly as well?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, what, I mean, and I don't think anybody's looking for precision, but, you know, relative magnitude on that. Total incremental cost would be, would be very helpful to have.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if it's a $5 million project, and it adds, you know, 20% to the project to give us the ability to keep it open, that's one consideration. If it adds, you know, 5%, that's, that's different. So we just don't have that information now to make an informed decision. All right.
I do have a question, you know, relative to A.D. Miller and, you know, the 19 people that are kind of interfacing on this thing. Could you just kind of walk us through a very high-level schedule of, all right, we just gave you, you know, a data dump on what we want to see redesigned. You're going to go throw that in the blender and solve it in the next 15 minutes. And then you're going to come back to the board with, you know, a new set of schematics that we'll approve. And then kind of just walk us through what that looks like over the next six weeks, so we understand, is this still doable? When does a handoff happen? How are, you know, people overseeing the different pieces?
Schedule piece?
Well. I've been thinking about it since we've been talking this whole time, and I don't really have an answer for you. We have to go back to all consultants to kind of see what their schedules look at, because they're after revise and redesign everything, too. I'm thinking if we can get that done in a couple of weeks, maybe we can show you that we had a plan in mid-July of some sorts, and then kind of see to where we go from that point. And I'd hate to commit to something right now because I just don't know what the other teams, or other teammates can handle doing right now or not, and how long it will take us to kind of iron out this plan.
Now, we have a meeting scheduled for July 14th. It's our only meeting in July. Just as a FYI, we could always call a special meeting. We only have one meeting scheduled. And then our next meeting, that's currently on the books, would be August 11th. So July 14th is. Well, no, July 14th is the meeting that we have on the books.
Oh, sorry, 28th.
Yeah, so July 14th is our only meeting in July, and then the next opportunity for the council to meet is August 11th.
Okay.
Unless we call a special meeting. All right. Any additional questions for staff?
Oh, I think you asked about kind of who's.
The handoff.
Yeah. So when we get, I guess we'll see how our design schedule goes. But the plan is for them to, for A.D. Miller to be along with us for the design up until the end, doing pre-con with us, so working on the schedule, working on the cost estimating to really hone in on what the real price is going to be to build it. So they'll work with us up through probably the beginning of September, and then we're still hoping that they, they would get their guaranteed maximum price to us, I think, at the end of August, and then would really start construction in September. And I do think they brought up the idea of maybe doing an early demolition permit to really kind of get things going, even if the design isn't 100% at that point. So just so we can start moving with the construction and not have to wait for the overall permit. So that's something that's kind of on the table, too. And then, yeah, and then it'll be, we'll still meet with BRS. BRS will still oversee construction. We'll have ongoing meetings with them throughout the whole construction process. But really, A.D. Miller would be taking over in September.
And then we would approve that agreement, you know, at the end of August when they've got their GMP done?
Correct. It'll be an amendment to this agreement.
Sure, okay.
And I'm just curious, a question for Adam, if you want to come up to the podium. So we haven't, we haven't met you yet. We've seen the presentation and the materials that you supplied. One of the things that has been discussed at previous meetings, it's really important for us to open up on time and not lose a summer swim season. So this, the scope of this project, starting at the end of the swim season, going through the fall, winter, and spring, is it doable?
It's doable. Unfortunately, we get to build pools pretty much during this period. And everybody has the same goal. We want to end, and everybody's done with their, you know, their inner tubes and their swim shorts, and then we want to start, you know, Memorial Day. So a lot of the pools that we do have a similar timeline. I would say the pre-construction element and working hip-to-hip becomes more integral when we have a little bit of a condensed timeline in the pre-con portion. So some of the things that they mentioned, being there to be able to push it forward, potentially in the demo permit and stuff, allows us to make sure that we can be able to hit those dates.
Okay. One of the things that is important for me to hear, and I'm sure for others, I would much rather get this project right and on time than quick and wrong, right? Like, so like, I don't want us to move forward with a design that nobody's, you know, 100% on board, and then open, and then all of a sudden, the public is like, what did you do here? So, you know, if it gets to the point where like, we can't actually hit this on, on schedule for next swim season, I'm fine if we need to delay it. Like, I'd rather do it well than do it fast.
Totally agree. I don't think anybody wants to take undue risk, especially for a pool that we want longevity in the systems and the operational elements. So for us, I think there's a full alignment interest as far as how we execute, making sure that it's done well. And if we get to an inflection point where some of that, and the timing starts to become troublesome, we'll certainly raise our hand.
Appreciate that. Okay, thank you. All right, any additional questions for staff? Otherwise, why don't we open up for public comment? Anybody here in the council room like to give public comment on this design? All right, anybody on Zoom? There's nobody on Zoom. Come on, Megan Sims, I see you.
I mean, I'll say, I'm reiterating, I really, um, I totally agree with Mark. I have four kids. We've been here for, I don't know, 20-something years, and kids that have graduated from Flyers, kids that are not in Flyers, with all, all of the things. But, and I live right near the north pool. And I also, like, all of the surveys were sort of crazy in the sense that everybody, like you said, wants everything, which is great. But I love the idea of the south pool having all the fun little kid stuff, and the north pool being more of like the swim team thing and lap swimming and an exercise-relaxing pool for older people. So I, and I agree with the pool building, like, everything you said, Mark. I was, I was like, yes, I like this. So I just would reiterate, I think it's, I think that's how I would use the pool. That's how I would spend my money. I think the slide is a little bit crazy, and it takes up too much space for Flyers, same with the hot tub. I like the idea of the splash pad. I guess my only comment on that, I have kids that are lifeguards, so they like how currently the waiting pool is shallow enough that they're able to just gate it off and say, like, there's no lifeguard on duty. And so the lifeguards don't have to be stationed in that one place. They can just kind of stay in the other one. So I don't know if you can make the zero-entry waiting pool still zero-entry, but only that depth, and then it can be gated off? I don't know if that's, like, as you were talking, that's what I was thinking, maybe that was something. The only other thing I noticed about, and I don't see it on here right now, but there was something where it had maybe, like, by the building, in front of the building, between the building and the pool, there were like shower heads, oh, yeah, here.
Whole mountain of showerheads?
Is that for an actual shower? Do we need that? I don't know. Just seemed excessive, but maybe we do. But it's sort of a weird place, because that's where currently the lifeguards are stationed, and like, where they can see are stationed, and like where they can see from where they hang out and watch the kids at the pool. Those are kind of my comments. But I really, I love how you've discussed it and what you've kind of landed on now. If that ends up being where you are, I'm all for it.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else here in the council room? Come on down.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo the same thing. I'm also a Flyers parent, and I've got two kids that have come through Flyers. It's, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but it's just such a great organization. It does a great thing for all of the community. And I agree with most of what you said as well, Mark. I think, I think the only point I might even ask is, Neil, to your point about the changing rooms, if it's more of an athletic pool, maybe you need only one. Maybe you can just, I mean, you can just get some space that way. Drop it down to one, one changing room, maybe. But yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, get some of the amenities, keep them in the South Pool. That's where kids can go more crazy, where they can have more fun, and this is a deeper pool. It's not, it's not quite the place for kids going quite as nuts. So, yeah, great job. I really like where it's going. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right. Public comment is closed. All right, turn it back to council for discussion. What are we thinking? I know, just want to make sure we're on the same page and given clear direction. All right. Well, I'm gonna summarize kind of what I think the direction is. We're a no on the slide. We're a no on the hot tub. We're a yes on the waiting pool, directionally. We're keeping the pool an eight-lane pool, continues to be 25 meters. We're not changing any of that. But we are resurfacing it, getting new mechanical, new lights, all the bells and whistles. It's gonna be a fully functional, great pool. New concrete deck, additional shade, a gate on the west. There will be a separate building along the southeast for the mechanical. And then within the bathhouse, we are going to add a single-user restroom on the southeast, swap the men's and the women's locker rooms. So, the women's locker rooms, thank you. So, the women's locker rooms will be on the west side. The men's locker rooms will be on the east side. At least, potentially. If we're gonna do a family changing area, and that's gonna maybe cannibalize some of this space, then, you know, potentially maybe keep the men's over here. And I think the women's locker room should be bigger and have more stalls. So, whoever gets more square footage, however it plays, build it that way. We're gonna explore the option for exterior entrances to the both locker rooms. So, we're not having to walk through the building to access the locker rooms. We're gonna keep the patio as a covered patio and not enclose it. And then on this section, which is currently the mechanical, that would be where a lifeguard station and kitchen would go. And right now, we're just kind of directionally looking at one family changing room in addition to the single-user restroom. Because Jen, I do think your point that you raised about having closer access to the waiting pool over here is a good one, that people don't want to haul their child all the way over here. So, I think that that's, that's a good suggestion. So, largely the same, but improved, a better use of space. Both of the men's and the women's locker rooms have a lot of wasted space. I've, you know, I know that there's complaints about the women's locker rooms in terms of how small the stalls are, and you have to kind of hide so you can, behind the toilet to close the door. So, we'll build them to nicer standards, and it'll work, right? And I think the community's gonna be really happy, and hopefully we can put this design together in a way that will meet our schedule and get this built on time. And I think at the end of the day, when, when we're doing a project like this, if we change things too drastically, the community's potentially gonna be upset. They want it, they want it functional. They want it to last. They want it to be a wise investment in taxpayer dollars. And reconfiguring it in the way that the council's directing, I think will achieve those goals and not upset the apple cart too much. All right. And then we'll get the pricing on what the additional efficiency upgrades would be, and then subject to what those dollar amounts will look like. We can make a decision about that. And then we're also going to get the estimates for what it's gonna cost to give us the flexibility to keep the pool open year-round from a capital, mechanical expenditure perspective, understanding that the budget right now is not to keep us open year-round. All right? Did I miss anything?
Just sustainability. We're just gonna wait once they have their consultant, right?
Right, right. We're gonna get that additional information.
I requested a lazy river connecting the North and South Pool.
Under the gondola path?
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right. We have a contract to approve, right? Resolution? Somebody want to make a motion? All right, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve Townness Superior Resolution Number R-41, Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Townness Superior approving preconstruction services for the North Pool renovation with A.D. Miller.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mayor Lasis and a second from Councilmember Shaw. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lasis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig Craft.
Yes.
All right. Passed unanimously. Thank you all for the hard work. It's really hard to herd the cats and try to get everybody, you know, directionally moving in the same direction. So, we appreciate all the hard work, and we look forward to seeing the final design and work moving forward. So, thank you. All right. We are at 8:08, and we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at 8:15. All right, we are back, and we're on to item number eight, which is our final item of the evening. And it is a public hearing and first reading, consideration of an ordinance at the Town Council of the Townness Superior, approving the annexation to the town, real property known as Turnbull, and zoning such property as planned development. We have proof of publication? All right. I'll gavel in the public hearing. And turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Renee Stavros, Planning and Building Director. I'm looking at this entry slide, and the address is incorrect, which is awesome. It's, we are this evening talking about the Turnbull property, which is at 1599 South 76th Street. And as the mayor said, we are here to discuss the annexation and planned development for the Turnbull property. The Turnbulls have owned the property for a long time. Prior to the Marshall Fire, they had a home and several outbuildings on the property. The Marshall Fire eliminated all the buildings, and so currently this property is vacant land, and it's owned agricultural in the unincorporated Boulder County. Guardian Storage is located just north, Costco and Target. The Market Place is to the east, Sagamore is to the south, and then Boulder County Open Space and agriculturally-zoned lands are to the west. As part of this project, the application is to annex the 4.75 acre property into the Townness Superior and amend the Guardian Storage PD to include this property. In accordance with the town's municipal code, under annexation, this application requires the property to be zoned at this time. Part of this process that you've seen in, prior to this evening, on April 28th, you approved a quitclaim deed to relinquish any rights to the Turnbull property based on a discrepancy between the Turnbull property boundaries and the Sagamore subdivision. Those property lines will be fixed once this property is platted and developed through an FDP process. Then on May 12th, you passed a resolution of substantial compliance stating that the applicant had submitted all of the required materials, and their petition for annexation was complete. The annexation application for the Townness Superior is under Section 16510, Section 16530, and Section 16540, outlining the requirements and dedications for annexation into the town. And then as part of the annexation, there's a requirement for zoning the property, and that's part of Section 16730A and 161030. So, as I've stated, the application before you this evening is to annex this property and then zone it. PD, Guardian Storage is the applicant, and they're proposing to expand their services onto this property. And they've expanded their, proposed to expand their PD as part of this application. The amendment for the PD includes small businesses and personal flexible storage units on the Turnbull property. The extension would offer 35 to 50, 1,000 to 1,200 square-foot flexible storage units that are available for purchase or rent. The units are intended to accommodate a variety of users, and the applicant will go into more detail on like, what those uses may be. But there are a list of allowed and prohibited uses in the PD that is part of the packet this evening. The Planning Commission met on June 17th at a public hearing to consider the application for annexation and the PD. The Planning Commission voted five to zero, recommending approval of the proposed annexation and PD zoning application. And there's an ordinance approving the annexation in your packets, should you choose to approve it. The applicant is here this evening with their own presentation, and will go through a more detailed explanation of their proposal for you. Kevin Cohen is here with Guardian Storage, and Jim Brostovich as the engineer on the project.
Welcome.
Thanks, Renee.
Yeah.
I do, before we get started, I do have one question about just the materials that were in the packet. So, there's reference in, I believe it's in the PD, to planning area two, and it's not defined. And so, I'm just wanting to, I think I understand what planning area two is and what planning area one is, but for purposes of clarifying the record for the public, what is planning area one, and what is planning area two?
Absolutely. Their, their original upload didn't include the second page, but I did upload the, both pages. So, planning area one is the existing Guardian Storage property, and planning area two is the Turnbull property. Sorry.
Thanks for that clarification.
Good evening, Mayor. Town Council members, thanks for having me. I will tell you, I left my house in unincorporated Boulder County at 6:45. I got two taxes. Everybody was ahead of schedule. I was panicked. I was... I was panicked, I was not going to be on time. So I'm relieved to be here. I'm relieved that everybody who was here on the previous meeting has left. I'm a managing partner in Guardian Storage. I've been a Boulder County resident for 26 years and I also have been officeing at the property here in Superior for 13 years. It's hard to believe it's been 13 years since we came before the town board for approval of our PD and annexation and here we are today asking for an expansion of that PD so that we can hopefully expand our products and services to the community. It's been a great decade for us here and I say that not just from being a profitable business, but in terms of just the things we've been able to do in the community. We've been doing this a long time, 35 years as a business, and I'm not sure there's ever been a situation where we've been as entwined with the town that we were located in as we are here in Superior. So a little bit of background on us, we design, construct and operate ourselves our state-of-the-art developments, delivering storage solutions to both residential and commercial clients. We've developed over 3 million square feet and we manage it ourselves of storage developed in Western PA and Colorado. And we believe we deliver solutions that are superior, state-of-the-art in architecture, landscaping, customer service, technology, customer amenities, and I'll say most importantly, the people who run our properties. And we opened in February 2012 at 1555 South 76th Street. What I'm most proud of about Guardian has been our community involvement. We want to be a place wherever we are that's more than a place that just people store it. And some of the examples of the things we've done are listed before you. We offer our location as a, as a place for biannual free document shredding and electronic recycling, coat and sock drives. We're active and present at community events like the parade and pancakes, Chili Fest. And last I will mention that we are extremely active in the Chamber of Commerce, including hosting business after hours. I don't know if any of you saw this issue in the winter 2025, Hello Superior, but Jen Willard with Pink Village, she has started a business where she does heart-shaped pillows that attach to C-pelts to help breast cancer survivors during recovery. She's distributed 6,200 pillows across 40 states and we give her a complimentary unit. We give her the use of a free truck to help her get her pillows out to the community. For all these efforts, we've been recognized by the Chamber of Commerce twice, first as the Independent Business of the Year in 2014 and then in 2019 as the Business of the Year. And I know it sounds like I'm just bragging and what's this have to do with the presentation, but it really does have something to do with the Flex space that I'm going to introduce to you in a few moments. So thank you for letting me talk about that. That's not Guardian Storage for Collins, it is Superior and I won't spend, and my wife pointed that out to me when I was showing her the presentation and she's like, are you going to change it? I'm like, I'm not changing it now. Anyway, this is the orientation, our existing property is immediately north of the subject The mechanics, I think everybody's familiar with, but we're asking for approval on the PD and annexation. The PD will establish the zoning for the property, including the allowed uses, the prohibited uses, the architectural requirements, setbacks, height restrictions, landscape requirements. The two overarching allowed uses for the PD are traditional self-storage, so what we've been offering at our existing store in Flex Space, which I'll talk about in a minute. Obviously, should the PD be approved, the next step is for us to begin with the final development plan, which is all the nuts and bolts, the actual site plan, the civil engineering, the architectural renderings, et cetera, et cetera. And of course, this FDP will also be subject to yours, the town council's approval.
And do you have an idea of how long the FDP process will take?
It always takes longer than you anticipate. You know, we're still working through the exact mix of Flex Space and self-storage and what we're going to do. It is a new product for us, the Flex, and we want to make sure we do it right. Having said that, I think we could be another nine months, you know, before we come, come forward with the final development plan.
Okay.
One of the benefits of being involved with local businesses is that we get to speak to these people, we get to talk to these people. And we hear, and I'll give you a real life example in a moment, that small businesses need large storage options to house and manage their inventory. This type of space is very limited, it's become very expensive in Boulder County. One of the reasons for that is a lot of the land that was previously zoned for this type of use has been rezoned for multifamily. So if you would actually do a search for Flex Space in Boulder County, you're going to find a lot of things come up that are older, more expensive, big, you know, starting at 4,000 square feet going up to 30,000 square feet. There's no overhead doors in them, there's no clear space and most importantly, they're almost all for rent. And ownership is a big distinction of this product. People want to own this space, they want to control their destiny, they don't want to be subject to landlords and rent increases, they want to build equity in it. So we see while we would offer the vast majority of it, or all of it to be owned, or at least most of these projects are being predominantly sold to, to individuals or small businesses. I said I'd give you a real life example. Years back, KUHL, if I'm saying that right, apparel was one of our first tenants. They started with one 300 square foot unit and again, that's the largest size that we have. It was their Colorado division and they would bring in their inventory, they'd roll it out into our office, they'd use our conference room, they'd talk about it, then they rented a second unit, then they rented a third unit. And then they came to us and they said, we need something bigger, can you accommodate us? And we couldn't. And they moved out of Guardian Storage, they moved out of Superior. This is the type of product that we want to be able to accommodate these types of businesses so they stay with us, they stay in the town. So again, 25 to 50 large flexible units, 1,000 to 2,000 square feet. I'd say the average size will end up being about 1,200 square feet plus or minus. Users of this product might include small office, inventory and distribution-based businesses and recreational users. So this is a highly customizable product, but here's some of the amenities that it might include, 14 to 20-foot wide overhead doors with openers, remotes, wireless keypads, we'll insulate them so that they can be temperature controlled. Utilities would be individually metered to the unit. We'd have likely 150 watt panels, 240 volt ready, private restrooms in each unit, epoxy floor finishes and an option to have, there'll be enough height in the units that if somebody wanted to add a mezzanine for additional floor space, they could. So these are scalable, flexible, ownable units for people that want to work, that want to store, and that want to play. And I don't know how well you can see this, but this is, we've actually, or we're going to engage one of the largest developers of this product in the nation, they're called Personal Warehouse, to help us avoid a lot of the pitfalls. We don't want to try to figure it out on our own. And these are actually their pictures and you can see some of the ways that people have, have laid out these units, you can see the mezzanines, you have an idea of what I'm talking about. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the neighborhood communication that's gone on. I came forward before you regarding the concept plan, it was highly recommended to reach out to the neighbors. It's something I would have done regardless because it's the right thing to do. But we did send out letters along Blackfoot Street in September 2024. Blackfoot Street is the northernmost street in Sagamore that shares the property line with the subject property. So I felt that they were the most affected by our potential development, so I wanted to get their feedback. And we did it because it's good practice, but I also did it because it's not lost on me, it's not lost on anyone, what the neighborhood went through with the loss of their homes. I was in my office the day the fire started, so there was a little personal relationship with me on it and I can tell you there was a genuine sincere desire by me to want to be able to accommodate the neighbors' concerns as much as possible. It, it was a challenge because this is a long, narrow site with significant topography gain from east to west. So what we could accommodate was somewhat limited, but we heard their concerns and these were the primary concerns as I heard them. Setbacks, proximity of the projects to existing homes, height and loss of use to the west, vehicle headlights facing directly south, uses that might be incompatible with the neighborhood and architecture and appearance. So this is how we addressed each of the concerns brought to us. And we started the PD with a framework that was light industrial because that, we thought that was the most applicable. And regards to proximity of the existing homes, light industrial requires a setback of 20 feet on the south property line. Our PD requires a 45-foot setback on the south property line, so we've given an additional 25 feet of setback beyond what is typically required in the town. On the heights and loss of use to the west, light industrial has a maximum height of 60, our maximum height is 39 feet on the west and, sorry, 39 feet on the east and 30 feet on the west. On headlights facing directly south, light industrial has nothing to address this, but we've specified in the PD that a six-foot tall opaque fence is required in addition to the tree plantings and landscaping where drive aisles face south. And we'll give you a little bit of orientation of how the site plan might look at the end of the presentation. In terms of uses that would be incompatible with the neighborhood, we were very specific with calling these out and they were not invented by us, they were modeled after other areas of the town zoning code. And we added this last bullet ourselves to sort of be something that encompasses everything by saying manufacturing and other uses that do not adhere to local noise, environmental odor or emission standards. I also want to add, like any well-governed HOA for residences or business parks, we will have rules and regulations that are enforced by a third-party management company. There's penalties, there's fines, just like there would be in any other type of development of this. I do want to point out that I think people having ownership of these units, they have skin in the game, they have more to lose. So I think it does tend to turn out, you know, a better showing by the people because they're, they're invested in it. And so I do think that's an important distinction. Architecture appearance, at the end of the day, you know, when we construct Planning Area Two, it's going to look like it was all developed at the one, at one time, it's going to be consistent. And the PD says the architectures shall complement Planning Area One, including materials, colors and articulation. It'll be the same stone, it'll be the same block, same materials, same glass, same steel, same parapo walls, same articulation, same everything. Again, we want it to look like it was all built to be one business. So this is moving off the neighbors' concerns. I didn't have this in the Planning Commission deck and I thought I should at least show the PD allowed uses. And we intentionally, the, the blue are the actual uses in the PD, the black are examples of each, so you get an idea of what they mean. But we intentionally meant to be a little bit more broad here. When we started doing this PD, we were more specific and what we were found was happening is we were going to potentially be eliminating users who could be a great user for this product. And this slide really gets me excited because it demonstrates the wide range of potential end-users that could benefit from this product and allow for a really vibrant community from small, single businesses, entrepreneurs, artists, collectors. There's, there's just, there are an endless number of possibilities for people who would like to have a space like this. Lastly, I, I think this is my time where I say why self-storage or Flex versus other uses. And I think, you know, the questions that need to be answered is, one, do you want this to be developed, this property? And what's the best use for it? And the comprehensive plan calls, I believe, for medium density multifamily or light industrial. So this is where I make my case, where I say why I think our use is better than multifamily. We're bringing a needed product. We've already talked about the Flex Base, there's nothing like it in Superior. I don't want to put self-storage to the side as a possibility because self-storage has become an integral product to the multifamily development that you see going on at downtown that'll take place around their site. Self-storage used to have this stigma as being a place where Americans threw their junk or their excess stuff. That's not what self-storage is anymore. Self-storage is an extension of this small apartment that no longer has a place to store their bikes in the winter, store their skis in the summer, their Christmas decorations, their seasonal clothes. It's an integral part that allows multifamily development where people are living smaller and smaller to happen. We're quiet, self-storage at least, the traffic, the visits are one visit per hundred units rented at peak hours, which comes out to about six to seven cars per hour at peak hours. I don't have the stats for the Flex Space, but it's comparable, I do know that. And I have visited a lot of these properties and they're, they're quiet uses. It's low impact from the standpoint that all the utilities are in 76th Street, we don't have to put any additional burden on the city's infrastructure. And these last three, the lower height, the accommodated setback, the lighting, I can't speak for a multifamily developer, I'm not a multifamily developer, but I have a hard time believing with the configuration of the site that a multifamily developer is going to be able to make the kind of concessions for the neighbors' concerns that we're able to make with our product. So I'm going to hand it off to Jim Brostovich, Civil Resources. This is not an official site plan, but we didn't come up with our PD and our setbacks, et cetera, without some sketching of how this thing might lay out. And when we were with the Planning Commission, we didn't have this and we realized it was a mistake, so that was a great run-through for this. So I'll let Jim just speak a little bit about the site's orientation.
Hi, Jim Brostovich, Civil Resources. So the site, you wouldn't know it just by looking at it from the street, it actually is 40 feet higher on the west than it is on the east. So when I initially looked at this site, I was like, well, let's just put two long buildings that are, you know, oriented that way. Well, it doesn't really work because every building would need to step and that just doesn't work. Because when we set these up to be potentially occupied by businesses, they need to be ADA accessible. So you can't have a step every building and have a sidewalk out to the street. We also have concerns about snow melt and solar gain and any, and any, and other concerns. So this is another alternative here with the north-south buildings and the mix will probably change, but on the east, the two larger buildings, the orange ones, those would be potentially a little taller. But as the views face northwest, you know, you get taller buildings over here, if you're, if you're looking northwest towards the flatirons, these aren't probably going to be in your view shed. That's why we made the buildings on the left side, the west side, made them smaller. Honestly, the Flex Space probably wouldn't be anywhere near the 39 feet tall, those are normally like 20. The drive aisle, yes, it is over there, that gives us this, the ability to give the additional setback from the property line there. And as Kevin mentioned, we would have the opaque fences wherever anything was facing south. Parking, we didn't really talk about parking, the PD basically says we're going to comply with town code for industrial use on a site-wide basis. When this comes in with an FDP, these, the consultants that do this, we don't want, we don't want to overpark it. We don't want to have a bunch of parking that's never going to be used. There is a formula that will There is a formula that will come in with it. There'll probably be a parking study that comes with in with it. But for the purpose of the PD, we're just going to say we're going to comply with code. As Kevin mentioned, the
Yeah, just when you do come with the FDP, because one of the questions I have relative to parking and just access is fire engine access. Like if it's just storage, things don't usually catch fire. But with some of the uses that were on the earlier page, some of those things can catch fire. So I'd like to understand how that potentially gets addressed.
Sure.
Because if, you know, normal storage doesn't have like really wide drivelanes, you know, how do you get an 80-foot rig down the street if something's on fire in one of those corners?
Well, that's a great point. Actually, all these fire court, all these are less than 150 feet deep. So per fire code
Then it's okay.
That works. That one on the very left side, the fire truck could circulate all the way around it. And yeah, the the drive aisles here will vary. Because if you have a really deep unit, you want to make sure the drive aisle is appropriately sized for the whatever you're going to pull into the unit.
Okay, thank you.
And then I guess the last thing is infrastructure wise, the detention pond for Guardian Storage that exists now will just be expanded further south. All that works. Utilities are already there. The driveway would most likely line up with the the back of house for TJ Maxx and Target there. So we think it's a pretty, pretty efficient design.
I know that this is just a rough plan, but what do we have there? About 100 units?
This this plan here is a mix of the flex space and some just larger storage units. I don't know how many units are in this plan. We have it somewhere. But the the for sale ones would be the the eastern buildings, the two orange ones and probably the blue one. And the ones on the left side would probably be bigger storage units that might not have all the amenities. They probably wouldn't have the bathrooms and things like that. So this would show a mix of sizes. Where where we land on that is to be determined.
Do you ever build a, you know, a flex space? Like if somebody's using it for for studio space, right, like a yoga studio or something like that? Or you ever put windows in spaces like that?
They will have windows typically in the garage, the overhead doors themselves. There'll still be an overhead door. I don't know if any of the pictures back there showed it. No, you can't see it in this picture. Yeah, bottom left, you can see some of the windows in the garage doors. And then there's typically a man door next to them with another window. If it's on the end, you know, we can, we can add some windows there. But people like natural light, so to the degree that we can incorporate it, we will. I think that site plan was about 50 units. I think the total square footage of the site is coming around 50,000, 60,000 gross square feet. It's pretty low efficiency for four and a half acres. But that's one of the, that's one of the outcomes of having a site that's long and narrow.
With uses such as, you said you've got accountants and other things that are non-overhead door type of users, do you anticipate any double stacked units?
Well, those those are double stacked units, right? Oh, you mean where there's
Two stories.
I don't think so. No. I could see somebody buying two, like adjacent units together. But yeah.
You're not planning on doing one story, second story on top?
No.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
It would be tough to park that. So then that's part of the, part of the reason why we get the consultant in. Because, you know, there's a history of, you get so much percentage of people wanting office versus people that are just going to store their stuff there and never show up. You'll notice in the PD, there's a provision that you could have up to 25% of a floor area in a given unit to be retail. So if you were an artisan, you could sell things out of here. But you don't, we don't have the parking to support, you know, one or four per thousand or five per thousand, whatever it is for for strictly retail use.
To the extent that any of these are used for like office space or studios, definitely consider western facing windows to the extent that you've got a unbelievable view of the flatirons to the west.
Absolutely.
I don't know to what extent you're blocked by the hill, but I imagine there's some view, right?
For sure. I mean, I think any any opportunity, we we have visited other properties and the units that have more windows tend to sell first and for a higher price too. So they that is definitely a desired amenity. And it is spectacular to the west. I'm very fortunate. I get to office on the second floor of the corner there and look at it every day. So I would love for these users to be able to experience that and enjoy it as well.
A quick question on, like, you know, these ones that are going to be for sale potentially, you know, they're they're going to be plumbed, they're going to have their own. Are you going to have a master plum line or is there going to be individual tap fees for each of these units?
The way these are normally set up is you have one tap per building. And then there may be sub meters, so these will be condominiumized.
Okay.
So there'll be one tap per building.
And part of why I'm asking that question is like, you know, look at a traffic study and you get one ends industrial, one ends mini warehouse, but a lot of the use cases don't fit into either of those. So I'm trying to just wrap my head around how many trips if someone's running a yoga studio here and there's five people that are coming to yoga, where are we going to put those cars? How much water is getting used? Like, what does that change to these these trip forecasts, which could be wildly incorrect if it's if it's a yoga studio, for example, or if someone just parked in their car? They're never visiting it, right? They're coming up to get it, right? It's just two different ends of the spectrum. And that's the part that's that's very hard. Like if it's just storage, I totally buy these numbers. It's the sort of for sale, you know, you you own it, it's a maker space, and it could change dynamically based on the ownership. And that's where I just, because conceptually, it's not something I've seen, as you've said already, it's just not very common here. So it's hard to wrap our heads around what that means from an infrastructure perspective, what it means to the neighbors, what it means to, you know, all the myriad of things as opposed to, you know, the existing storage facility. So it it's hard if there's something like around here to to kind of sort of compare it to. Because most of those pictures were all stationary businesses, right? Like if someone's parking something that never gets moved, but on your list of things that it could be, and maybe it never is any of those things, but almost everything that's on that list is a more intense usage than what we've seen historically. So that's the part that I'm just trying to understand in terms of what's the potential impact. And I know you've tried to do everything to minimize the impact. It's just trying to understand some of the unforeseen ways that people could use this space since you're potentially selling them and then they've got their own ability to do whatever they want within whatever guidelines you may have. I mean, so what are the thoughts there to try to manage that like as an HOA? Is it is it going to be Guardian that's overseeing that? Is it is it a HOA-like organization? How does that potentially work?
It will not, it will be a third party management company that specializes in this type of use that is experienced in it. It will not be Guardian Storage. And, you know, those are all good points and something that we will definitely work through on the final development plan and be ready to present. I mean, there's, if you're running, if you have a yoga studio there, for example, it's not going to be a yoga studio that can have 20 people having a class. Like, we will have to define a yoga studio for an instructor and two, two students. I'm just citing an example. It's going, businesses are going to be, you know, single business entities. We are going to design the FDP, the HOA to make sure that all the designs and all the impacts you are talking about are proportionally aligned.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's an interesting, you know, concept that I'm thinking about to the extent that it would be used by professional services, like an architect's office or an accountant's office. You know, you you may have a situation where you're you have a client come in, right? And you've got one, you know, visitor, which seems like it wouldn't be, you know, or maybe two cars, you know, something like that. You know, not necessarily disruptive to the neighborhood. But yeah, like you have a yoga studio with 20, it's a different. And then you're not only inconveniencing, you know, potentially the neighborhood to the south, but the other users of 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 the space, right? So
Absolutely. And that's not a benefit to us either, right? I mean, it's got to work for everybody. And if we have that situation, we're not going to be able to sell the other units. So it does all have to be well, well thought through.
So so accommodating some kind of like visitor spaces in in the site plan probably makes sense just from, in terms of the allowable uses here, right? Like, you know, if you've got a workshop or something like that. I mean, if if there are commercial uses that are that are being allowed in this in this PD, you want to be able to invite customers to visit for, you know, a period of time to kind of see what they're going to buy, see what they're ordering, you know, meet with, you know, the artisan that's working in in these types of units. And you want to be accommodative of giving them access to parking and and stuff like that. But yeah, it's 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 a very interesting, you know, concept. And I think it could just be a unique offering in the market because I haven't seen anything like this before, so.
Going back to the uses, like, because I think on the on the project narrative, there's specialized automotive use, which could be a wrap installation, which I actually think, you know, I think I got my car, the windows tinted a space like this in Broomfield. You know, there's just one bay, car goes in and that's it. But you can't do any auto repair here. It's just basic, you know, sort of window tint, wrap kind of thing.
I think auto repair is actually one of our prohibited uses, isn't it?
Yeah, I think I think like general repair.
Oh, yeah, auto repair shops. Okay.
But, you know, if somebody's got their private car collection in there and they're working on their own thing behind the closed doors, I don't think that would be prohibited, but.
Yeah, I mean, if you threw, I mean, if I owned it and I threw a lift in there because of whatever, that's allowable because it's not a, it's not a shop, but I can, you know, take my catalytic converter off or something if I wanted to in my own space.
Do what you want.
I'll get your phone number.
It's an EV. It's an EV. I don't have one, so. Okay. It's more efficient.
All right. Anything further in your presentation here?
I think so. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present.
All right, thank you. Anything further from staff, Renee?
No, unless you have questions on the process or the requirements or the annexation versus the PD versus the agreement that's in your packet. There is an updated version of the agreement that was updated this afternoon that's signed. That's the official one. And Nick can probably answer specific questions related to the annexation itself. But that's all we have for you this evening unless you have further questions.
I do have one more question. I think I had asked you at the last one, how does this affect our housing opportunity goal relative to the TOD bill? I went back through my notes. So because we're annexing this in, it's not part of our January 1, 2024 original goal. But I think Lisa was confused. I'm confused. When you annex land in, do these five acres become part of our new HOG? I I don't know. And if it is, then effectively by going, you know, non-housing, we've then had to increase the density for all future housing relative to the state's HOG. So if you could get confirmation on what happens with annexed land around a TOD, and I'm going to find more acronyms to throw at you if I can think of any. But the point being, and this is sort of the double edged sword of what the state has tried to do to us of, you know, turn everything into housing. Well, people have to have jobs. You know, and then how does that sort of, how does one sort of coexist with the other?
Okay, that is something that I'll have to bring back to you.
Yeah. No, no, I I know you don't have the answer. It's more a question of, you know, under the state's guidance from DOLA or whomever, when land does get annexed in around a TOD, what does that do to your housing goal?
If it falls within the area, then
And this one does from the original match, right?
Right, yeah. It did for some of them and not, it's not within a quarter mile. So whatever the requirement was within a quarter mile, it doesn't fall within. But with a half mile, it does. So I will verify the requirements if you annex in how that and at what point date wise.
Well, I I know the date was as of January 1st, so 2024. So everything going forward, you start monkeying around because otherwise everyone's going to start like, you know, changing the maps and everything else. But as you annex that, and arguably, it should be part of our new HOG, right? I mean, that's the right thing. So if this goes to five acres of non-housing and the target was, I think, four units per acre, actually, it's probably like 15, you know, then this makes everything else have to go up by that much.
Sure, we can look into that also. The zoning also, I mean, we're not zoning for multifamily here. They're not proposing to zone. But the code, but the state law does say if you zone and allow it, then you're meeting the requirement. So that's an interesting.
Right.
Not that that applies here, but we could look at that when we're looking at other sites in the future for zoning purposes. If you allow for the zoning, then it would meet the requirements of that code specific, like to the number of units that are possible to be built.
And the reason I'm going in this direction because the flex space here is a very strange beast relative to housing because it is exactly as described by the applicant. It is an auxiliary part of housing, right? And I don't want us to lose the opportunity. I know it's, you can't live here, but you know, it is sort of, it's not cut and dried relative to how everything else is defined.
Well, why don't I look into the see if we annex, if it counts and how many additional units it would add to our overall count based on the the bill that was passed that we're supposed to comply with? I'm not sure the, like, I don't know what 4.5 acres is equivalent to in our housing goals. Like, how many would that increase our goal to? So I'll look into that.
Thank you.
I know this is Boulder County, but but what is this? This is agricultural?
Yeah, that is a, that's an old map of his pre-marshall fire. So that's a property that's owned by an individual or an LLC. But it was a house with outbuildings just like this was. And it's also part of our annexation, three mile.
But right now I'm seeing like, you know, there's, I'm not exactly sure what I'm what I'm looking at, user trailers.
I don't think those are there anymore.
Is there anything there?
No. This was pre-fire, this photo here.
Okay, but it's it's owned agricultural and it's in Boulder County?
Yes. I think. Nope, that one's, that one still shows it also somewhere. Oh, I don't know. Sorry. I thought maybe I had a different picture, but it's all still showing pre-marshall fire. But all of these are also part of, where's my mouse? All the the property to the west of Guardian, at the existing Guardian and to the north are part of the 76th Street opportunity areas as are called out in the comprehensive plan that is approved and the update itself that we're going through right now.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? All right, what do we hear from the public? Anybody in the public like to give a public comment? We're so patient.
No problem. My name is Tiana Estrada with Estrada Real Estate Group. I am the real estate agent for Joe Turnbull, who is the current owner of the property. I've known the Turnbull family for about a decade now. And I don't know if you all are aware, but Edna Nadine Turnbull unfortunately succumbed to the fire and did not make it, which has resulted in displacement of a special needs family member who also lived there. It's been a very trying five years for the Turnbull family. And so I'm here to just be a voice for them because it has gotten a little lost in the last five years of all of these things that are necessary. But, you know, Joe has really tried to remain a good neighbor. I know that prior to the marshal fires, there were some significant outbuildings and debris and things like that on the property. He has spent tens of thousands of dollars to try to get that cleaned up and have it not be such an eyesore. And he's also put a lot of time and effort into the offer that he has chosen to accept for this land that has been in his family, I think they're original owners. So it's been in his family for a long time. And unfortunately, there was not the desire or the ability to rebuild a single family home. So he was approached by several people, no approaches of rebuilding a single family. No approaches of rebuilding a single family. There was zero interest in someone purchasing five acres to rebuild just one home. Most of his interest was from multifamily. And we went through strenuous process with all of them. And he finally decided on working with Kevin and Guardian. One, they've been such great neighbors and superior. They've been neighbors to the Turnbulls for a long time. And he just felt like this was probably the best use for the land moving forward, given all of the opportunities that have crossed him as far as people wanting to purchase the property. He did feel that and does feel that this is a great in-between for this lot. Like they said, it's a very unusual, difficult lot to develop. And being in real estate, I know that talking with some of the multifamily, it was gonna be quite a challenge to try to fit what they needed to fit into this narrow, deep lot. So again, just here to be a voice for him and kind of let you all know where he's coming from and just to also not let the family's voice be lost in all of this, because they have lost a tremendous amount. And they're still trying to be good neighbors to a community that has served them well for a very long time. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you. We appreciate those comments. All right, there's nobody on Zoom. So public comment is closed for now. We'll reopen at the continuation of this hearing.
Right, which the hearing is still open.
At the second reading.
Yeah, yeah. But we'll keep, it's one big hearing from now until next.
Right, I'm not gonna close the hearing.
I have more about that, maybe.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions, concerns? I'll, I'll ask one question just for, for Kevin, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind coming up. We did have an individual come during public comment earlier this, this evening. So it's not during public comment during the public hearing. But he was a resident of Sagamore. He has property along Blackfoot. And, you know, is just kind of generally concerned about, you know, the impact that this was going to have. And at least my understanding, and everybody else can chime in in case I'm not representing this accurately. But his understanding was that the Turnbull property was, you know, in Boulder County, it was owned agricultural. It wasn't going to develop into something more intense than what it was previously zoned for. He relied on that. So to that comment, what, what do you say? I'm sure others along Blackfoot have similar concerns. I know that you, you raised, you had a slide there about the common concerns about the Blackfoot residents who are adjacent to this property. But any comments to that objection?
That was Rodney. I'm sure I, I've probably spent two hours on the phone with him over a number of phone calls. And such a nice gentleman, and I understood the concerns. And I tried to give him the information that I could. And, um, you know, I said the same thing that I said to you. You know, I, I think if it's going to be developed and I try not to be looking through my own rose-colored lenses, I, I, I think it's, we're a better use than the alternative that can go there. And, you know, if you have multifamily, you're gonna have a lot more renters. You're gonna have higher buildings. You're gonna have more density. And I don't think any of the, any of the existing homes lost value. When we, when Guardian Storage came in way back when, this place, I mean, this is really telling. This place was filled and people were out with their pitchforks. I mean, literally, like, almost like going like this with nothing in their hand, but it looked like pitchforks to me. And it was contentious, and this is gonna destroy the community. This is gonna hurt our home values. And none of it happened. And I think the fact that nobody is here, I shouldn't say nobody, that we don't have a room full of people opposing it, shows what a good neighbor we are and that the community can still be a strong neighborhood, can continue to grow in value. And I think the, the same thing will happen with this project. And again, I think the question for everybody is, are we gonna allow this to be developed? And if you are, what's less impactful, what we're proposing or medium-density multifamily?
All right. Thanks for the response. Any additional questions from council?
I, I have a question about, it's, it's more, should, what is the, the process, like, if this is approved and you're able to, to do this? A lot of people that have asked me about this have asked questions about, well, how do you, how, how do you buy one? Or how do you, is there, like, the expectation is that they won't last very long. And so is, is there like a, a process for, is it similar to residential real estate in terms of like models being built or like? And I understand you haven't done this before and it's a new product for you. But I think people are curious to, like, what is it, what, if it is approved and, and built, what does it look like to bring these online for people?
I mean, it, I hope what you're saying is true. I'd never approach, I assume we're gonna sell maybe one to two units per month for two years when we're putting our business model together, right? And that there'll be plenty of models for people to see. And because if you don't assume that, then, you know, might not work out. I will say the off-site garages across from the Broomfield Event Center presold, the entire thing. He didn't even hire a broker. That was a different time in the world. Interest rates were under 3%. People were looking for those type of things. So we're not counting on that. I don't know that I'm really answering your question, but we will, we will have, we will set up a model. We will have website, you know, with, with 3D, or not 3D, imaging of what they'll look like, what the dimensions will be, what the amenities will be. We will likely hire a brokerage firm that specializes in this product. Personalwarehouse.com, you should check it out. Likely will be the broker on this. So it will be well-advertised, well-marketed, detailed out, exactly what people are getting. I mean, it's not rocket science. It's not, it's not, it's not like it's a home, right? And you're buying it before it's built, though that happens in the world today. This is a simple product. So I think people are gonna have a really good understanding of exactly what we're building and we'll be able to gauge the public's interest from that. Did I answer your question at all? Honestly, you can say I didn't, and I'll try again.
It does. I, I'm, I'm wanna be like sensitive and cautious, so not like, tell me about this thing that we haven't even finished this hearing on. I'm so, so forgive me if my, like, question is hard to answer. But I, I think that, that is a curiosity. I, I think you answered it well enough. And, and that website understanding where I can tell people to go look if they wanna know more about kind of what this looks like. But it's, you know, there's a large part of Superior that's in HOA and there's a lot of restrictions and space is a problem. And people have cars and toys and things. And so there's, I think, there's a lot of interest in it, so.
I mean, one thing I will say is we are not inventing a new product here. No, I mean, I'm serious. We are trying to bring a product. I mean, it's, if you go up Highway 25, me, Johnstown, Frederick, you see it everywhere. I mean, it's been built all over the metro area. It just hasn't been built in Boulder County. And so I, I, I think it's a product that people are very familiar with. Once they start to see it advertised, they're gonna know what they're, what they're going to be getting. And, you know, it's, it's a 25-foot-high space. It's got an overhead door, a man door. It's got some HVAC. It's got some plumbing. It's got a few lights. It's, it's what it is. It's not anything that's like groundbreaking or that we're, we're inventing. I wish I was. That would be awesome. But I think it's a pretty straightforward product. I think the more challenging things is to work through sort of the parking and the impact and how do you have the yoga studio where they're not bringing in 20 people? But those are all things that we will have people that'll walk us through that. So when we come before you with the final development ban, plan, we're prepared. We've addressed all of those things and we will be ready.
You just made me think of another question on the, like, on the lending side of it. How are these considered in terms of, you can't live in it, so it's not a residential mortgage? These are, I mean, how?
Well, they're, I think they're commercial loans. Do you know? Yeah. I know they're commercially assessed for property taxes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Mark, can I add one? One question. Kevin, as you do kind of evaluate everything, the consideration of Cherokee Street? I assume because you're a secure facility as it is right now, it's access only by code, that that charity, Cherokee connection is not existent, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure for the residents in that part, know that this is not gonna become an access point to that facility if it, if it indeed does move forward.
It will not, right? Yeah.
All right. Any additional questions for the applicant or for staff? All right. All right, thank you.
All right.
Kevin? So Nick is jumping on the mic. What do you wanna tell us?
So a couple of things. I thought, so it's kind of funny. You guys actually did not talk as long as I thought you were going to, which is maybe a first ever. So when it comes to, when it comes to annexation, you have, you can't continue a hearing until you've talked for at least an hour. We are at 59 minutes. So I was gonna just to take some time during the public hearing to explain what you guys are gonna see in front of you if it sounds like you're gonna continue this to the, to the July meeting. So, and I don't need to talk as slow as I thought to, because I thought we were gonna wrap up about 15 minutes ago. I was getting a little worried. So in annexation, there's multiple steps. And then within the town steps, we have some multiple steps in addition to that. So upon conclusion of the hearing, which is not now, which will be next time, if, if and when you continue it, we're gonna pass what's called the resolution of substantial compliance. Or that's mislabeled. It should be a resident, a resolution of a finding of fact. And that's just basically gonna say that the petition that Joseph Turnbull submitted complies with everything. You're not really passing a value judgment on it. It's pretty similar to the resolution of substantial compliance, where the resolution of substantial compliance said, this looks pretty good. And then the resolution, the finding of fact, will say, this is good to go. Once that's passed, we'll pass that first. And then we'll pass the annexation ordinance. We're allowed to pass the annexation ordinance under the Annexation Act. Additionally, within the town, we've decided to just include zoning in the annexation agreement, which Renee mentioned was updated and will be in your updated packet. So we'll be good to go there for the next meeting. That all gets passed in one single ordinance. So that's the annexation ordinance, the zoning ordinance. In the annexation agreement, what would be a resolution, we're just gonna pass it all one together in one fell swoop. You'll see in the annexation agreement, it discusses, you know, if you don't get your zoning, you know, are the annexations difficult, yada, yada. So this just takes care of all that. It's, it's all in or all out. That's all I have to say.
All right. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Appreciate it. All right. So with that, do we need a motion to continue this for a second hearing? Or do we just move on and adjourn?
I would certainly, I guess it wouldn't hurt to make a motion. You certainly wanna say during the hearing on the record when we're continuing to, to a date certain.
All right. And do we have that? Is that gonna be July 8? Martin?
July 14. 14th, I think.
Okay.
So it'll be not only July 14th, it'll be July 14th at 6:00 PM at Town Hall.
All right. I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing for the second reading to occur on July 14th at 6:00 PM here at Town Hall, Superior, Colorado.
Thank you.
Second. All right, we're gonna motion from Mayor Laces to second Councilmember Shaw. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously and we are adjourned.